I'd like to welcome everyone to our special city council meeting of May 17, 2022. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the city council in according to open meeting law. Since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you are calling in on a phone and you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. I'd like to announce names of the city councillors that are on the call. I'm Val Gilman, I'm the Ward Four City Councillor and the Council President. We have Scott Memmard, who is Ward One. We have Jason Groh, who is at large. We have Tony Gross, who is at large. We have Sean Nolan, who's our Vice President and Ward Five. We have Frank Majota, who is Ward Three. Tracy O'Neill, who is Ward Two. Councillor Jamie O'Hara, who is at large. And tonight, as our guest representing staff is Greg Catamatory, who is our Planning Director and our interim Community Development Director. And we also have our City Clerk Joanne Sinos. Right now, we have 50 attendees. And what I'd like to do is, is open up. I'll ask for our City Clerk to tell us what the first order of business is and our only order of business. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
The one item agenda is public hearing 2022-010, rezoning 2021-003 to amend Gloucester zoning ordinance. Section 2.3.1 Residential Uses. Section 3.2.1 Dimensional Requirements for Single, Two-Family and Three-Family Dwellings. And then Section 3.2.2 Maximum Building Heights to 35 Feet in Zoning Districts R30, R20, R10 and R5. And then the maximum building height to 45 feet in zoning District CCD and CB. And then Section 3.2.2 Dimensional Requirements for Multi-Family Dwellings and Their Accessory Uses Other Than Signs. And then Section 3.1.6 Special Permit for Building Heights in Excess of Section 3.2 Limits. All amendments as reflected in the draft proposal, and this was continued from the May 10 city council meeting.
Thank you. And I'd like to open the public hearing and begin by asking our Planning Director Greg Catamatory to tell us about the zoning amendments that are in front of us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Greg Catamatory, Planning Director, Interim Community Development Director. I was able to connect with the network drive, so I have an updated presentation, which will look a lot like the presentation made at the PND meeting on April 20th. But it's also reflective of the motions that were made by PND moving these amendments forward, which were slightly modified from their original form. So if I can share my screen.
And I would just like to note that it looks like Councillor Worley is not yet on the call. But as soon as he gets on, we will make sure he is duly introduced.
And everybody can see that okay?
We can.
Okay, so these are the balance of the amendments that were proposed by the Planning Board last year relating to one, two and three family and multifamily housing as part of the Housing Production Plan. Brief outline, I'm going to make some general comments similar to what I presented at the PND meeting in April and then go through the various amendments that have been forwarded by the PND Committee again as modified, which include the proposed three-family by right in the R5 district. Three-family proposed height increase to 35. And I will note that the PND Committee removed the consideration of the increase in height of one and two family. Important amendment to note. Multifamily height of 35 feet in residential districts for, that allow multifamily in those districts that Joanne had read off earlier. And then also the increase in 45 in the Central Business and the Civic Central District. And then the last two amendments are really corresponding footnotes that relate to, if those heights are changed, there's some footnotes that relate to them in the dimensional tables. And then also the language for height exception. Again, if there's an increase of 35 for certain uses and an increase of 45 for certain uses, the section that deals with height exceptions or a request to increase height beyond what is allowed would also need to be modified. And then we can conclude with questions, but I'm sure you'll move to public comment as well. So general comments, again, it kind of amazes me that we're five months into this and there's still some accusations that are being made and misrepresentations and just misinformation. The council has done a tremendous job of trying to present this information and gather feedback. But we kind of still hear some, some things that are just plainly not, not true. So these amendments are entirely within the council's control. The MAPC provided support in the development of the Housing Production Plan. And the ordinances were developed by an ad hoc group that was called the Housing Production Plan Working Group, made up of members of all the volunteer boards and committees or all volunteer committees that were selected, including the zoning board, the planning board, the city council, the Affordable Housing Trust, and then also had representation like folks like David Holden from the Gloucester Housing Authority. But these were developed by the Planning Board again, with some technical support from Barrett Consulting Group, who also, you know, advise communities to tailor zoning amendments that, that suit the community's needs. That's what these are about. People have differences of opinion as to whether or not they hit the mark. But again, I'm just going to keep, continue to reiterate where they came from and who they came from and why they were, were developed. The current proposals are completely independent of the MBTA community's guidelines, which now the council has provided comment to the state on, as well as the mayor's office with consultation with myself and others. And those comments are critical of the guidelines, that they, they are not well defined for, for how they would best suit Gloucester's needs. So clearly, these proposals are not a part of that. That's something that will either be entertained in the future and ultimately have to be decided on by the council. Each of the proposals is not solely to create affordable housing. We've had quite a bit of discussion around that in the Housing Production Plan in its development. It was about options across markets, not just for affordability. And we deal with affordability in other strategies within the grant programs that we run, as well as the inclusionary housing requirements that have recently been proposed by the council to be amended further. And again, those are our local tools for dealing with the creation of affordable housing. So again, Housing Production Plan, the word's right in it. It's about how do we increase production? We've had a fairly steady growth rate. There is demand clearly because we see the market responding to that with, with limited supply. But also not suggesting that just increasing supplies is going to resolve that. But as each unit is created, it creates an opportunity to potentially move within the community or somebody to move to this community. People are constantly looking for larger homes and also constantly looking for smaller homes as they downsize. So all these proposals were developed out of community discussions around what the needs are and trying to match these proposals to help satisfy some of those needs. Again, Housing Production Plan addresses affordability through strategies such as community development block grant programs, leveraging housing trust funds, as well as Community Preservation Act funds. They're actually having a discussion this evening at the Community Preservation Committee on how they can collaborate better to produce results in creating either new units or also preserving affordability of units. And then our inclusionary housing requirements, which you've, you've seen in action, which have been also tailored through the Housing Production Plan to start to try to hit, you know, income or income requirements that are more suited to the demographics in the community. And then partnering with nonprofit housing groups like the YMCA and Action, who bring a lot of resources and also a lot of experience in developing affordable housing and also managing and providing safe, affordable housing for folks. And again, the only way that affordability is protected is by deed restriction. And the city currently has over 1,000 deed restricted units. So those are general comments specific to your proposed amendments. And I'll just walk through as they were provided from PND to the council.
Greg, if you could just hold on just for a second, I'd just like to introduce Jeff Worley is here. And we have 59 attendees, so thank you, Greg. Continue.
Sure. So the first amendment is to make an amendment to the use schedule, particularly for three families in the R5 district. They are currently allowed by special permit of the Zoning Board of Appeals. That, having it be a special permitted use by the Zoning Board of Appeals was changed several years back. It used to be a city council special permit. And part of the analysis in providing this, this proposal from the Planning Board was looking at, you know, where is the potential capacity for additional units or potential conversions or new three-family? This would only apply to lots that comply with the district and also have structures that comply with the district. So it is not, you know, it is something that would be a subset of possibility within the district because there are many lots that are not compliant. But again, it's, it's an incremental step to create some opportunity, particularly in the five, R5 district where there's also several amenities, including grocery store, other, other shopping in the area, public transportation. So again, it could be a potential opportunity to create some additional housing that again, would meet some of the need that was identified back in the plan development. This is just a slide that shows in the kind of dark orange, kind of burnt orange is the R5 district, which is bounded by 128 to the north and leads down to the Main Street area. And again, it's a subset of lots within that district that would be eligible for an as-of-right approach to a three-family. It's allowed, allowed use in the district right now. If, if it didn't comply otherwise, it would have to pursue relief from the Zoning Board of Appeals. But again, you know, trying, trying to create that opportunity where there is potential capacity. And we've heard a lot about feedback on whether there is capacity or not. So that's, that's something that I'm sure you'll hear more about later on. We provided an analysis of what it means, particularly the first column in this slide highlights the R5 district in what can happen right now. There's the allowance for one family and two family by right, including conversions, including conversions with and without exterior change in the, in the R5. That is something that is allowed for two-family. So the proposal of going to three-family, there's a delta between that potential that's there now. Again, not all of it is realized. These are individual decisions made by property owners, whether or not they propose to add a unit or not. And that number was around 548 lots that would comply for the potential. But again, remembering that there are other potential constraints, including how the structure is located on the lot, as well as potential utility constraints, wetland constraints and other things like that that may be a limiter on that. And again, of that potential, individuals make the choice as to whether or not they pursue adding a unit. So I further kind of broke it down, just to show you what that potential is made up of. It's the potential for a single family in the R5 district to convert to a three-family. So that would, you know, there's a certain number of lots. And then the unit that would, the number of units that would be generated by those potential conversions. And then also the potential for a two to three family conversion. And lastly, there are a few lots in the R5 district that are unbuilt. They again, may have some other constraints associated with them. They may not have road frontage or other things that also could be a limiter or a reason why they haven't been developed yet. So that's the first amendment. If you want me just to walk through all six, I can do that. I can stop there briefly if, if you want to entertain questions from the council at this point, or I can just can continue.
Councillors, what would you prefer? Should we continue? Councillor Nolan?
I think we should keep each one to 15 minutes. So we don't end up in a timeframe where people are saying they were.
Oh, okay, so let's, let's keep moving forward.
Okay, I'll just go through the whole thing as quickly as I can.
So, thank you.
So the second amendment that was moved out of the PND is an amendment to Section 3.2.1, the Dimensional Requirements for Single, Two-Family and Three-Family Dwellings by amending the maximum height to 35 feet for three-family dwellings in the R30, R20, R10, R5, CCD, CB and VB, to the extent of dimension tables as necessary. So this is the big departure. The original proposal was looking at 3.2.1 and raising the, the allowed height 35 feet for one, two and three family. The proposal out of PND was to limit that to three-family in this table, as it only addresses one, two and three family. So just for that, that threshold multifamily of three, of three units, the height increase would be 35 feet. We did show some examples of what structures might look like at 35 feet in the analysis when we were looking at across the board, as-of-right allowance to 35 feet, just for some examples, just to give an idea of what 35 feet height looks like. It probably means much more to an individual where they live next to a 30-foot structure when, when a 35 might be allowed. But we have plenty of housing stock that's in excess of 30 feet right now that was built prior to zoning or, or zoning restrictions to 30 feet, or that has attained relief from the Zoning Board of Appeals. The next amendment deals with the dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings. There's a separate table for multifamily of four or more units. So the use table deals with the classification by the number of units. And the way that dimensions are dealt with is there's a table for one, two and three family and then, and a table for four or more. The reason why it might be a little confusing, in the past, there was a table for one and two family and then all multifamily was in a separate table. But again, associated with that movement from the permit renting authority going from the city council down to the Zoning Board of Appeals, the dimensions were also moved into the one and two, one, the prior one and two family table. So this is just for where multifamily is allowed of four or more in other districts, which includes the R30, R20, R10 and R5. And again, so that would increase that height to 35 feet. The next amendment in the CCD in the CB district where we have larger buildings. This is, you know, kind of the real core of downtown around Main Street, around City Hall, where we have much taller buildings than 45 feet as well. We've also seen some recent examples of, of projects looking at, you know, three to four story, particularly in the Main Street area, the Middle Street area. And we have those examples of what those projects look like. And again, they're in that range of about 45 feet. So in specifically, the yellow is the CCD district and the red is the Central Business District. And that's where the proposal again, is just the height allowance to a buy right of 45, where a proposal could come in and consider that, so they can propose, you know, a three or four story building. But the use is a separate discussion. That is how we deal with those uses. And most all of them require city council special permitting. So it doesn't relieve an applicant from having to, you know, go through the special permitting process. It's just when they, when they go to design a building, they have that allowance of looking at a structure that could be up to 45 feet without any additional consideration by the city council. So again, the two examples were the Harbor Village on the corner of Elm Street and Main Street and the recently permitted and now funded targeting construction sometime in the next year. The 71 Middle Street project at the former YMCA, which is also around 45 feet height. And again, in the introduction, I mentioned that if these height increases are permitted through the zoning amendment process, there are footnotes and also other sections of the ordinance that have to be considered. There's a footnote to that multifamily dwelling dimensional table 3.2.2 that, that currently reads that there's an increase in one-half foot for each foot by which the building height exceeds 30, 30 feet. Because that's what it reads right now, because that's the limitation. And if, and if those uses are increased to 30 or 45 feet, that would be the point where that, that, that additional setback would, would have to be provided. So again, it's just, it's just a footnote that's reflective of what the as-of-right use height is. If it's not amended, the footnote's not changed. If, if the, the two prior amendments are passed, then this would be reflective of that new height allowance and this corresponding amendment will be made. Finally, the height exception language in 3.1.6 that allows an applicant to petition to the zoning board currently for a proposal that's an increase of 30 feet, where the height limitation is 30 feet, and to the city council where a project proposes to be greater than 35 feet. We would also have to adjust the language if, if changes were made to a height allowance of 35 and then also to 45. So the first section would remain the same because there are other permitted uses that continue to have, would continue to have a height restriction of 30 feet. But anything that has a permission of 35 would still be reviewed by the city council. But then there are those couple of instances in those, in those CCD and CB district where if the height were changed to 45, there has to be language that would be reflective of that if someone were to petition above that, they could do so. So that if it was left the way it is and you said yes to an increase in 45 in those two districts, there could be some confusion in this particular section where someone would say, well, don't I also have to go for a height exception because it says anything over 35 feet? So again, it's just a corresponding amendment if the change is made to 45 feet in those two districts. So those are the amendments. I know you've had a lot of time to consider them, so the questions are going to be minimal. But if there are questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Okay, um, in terms of our protocol, I believe that we should continue on and hear from the public. And then we'll get to council questions towards the end of the public hearing. So without objections, councillors, I'd like to, to open up the public hearing now to listen to anyone that is on the call that wants to speak in favor or in opposition for up to three minutes. I ask that everyone introduces themselves in their address. And Joanne Sinos will be keeping track of the time and will. Joanne, what is the noise you're going to make when the time is up? If you're, you're muted right now, but if you could just let everyone know what, what the noise will be.
The timer. I have as loud as I can. I have like a radiating sound, so hopefully you'll hear it. But I also probably raise my hand.
Okay.
Sound does not come through the computer.
Okay. So if you could really raise your hand, that would be very helpful. And I'll ask everyone to listen to, to when your time is up and respect that. Because this is, I think there will be a lot of people speaking tonight. Councillor Nolan, you had your hand raised. Do you have a question on the process?
Nope, just the motion on, on how it goes and Joanne answered it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the first person that had their hand up, as I noted, was Gordon Baird. So Madam Clerk, would you bring Gordon in? And Gordon, you have up to three minutes to talk to us about the, these amendments.
Can you hear me?
We can, your name and address, please. Thank you.
Gordon P. Baird Jr., and I emphasize the junior, at 27 Fort Hill Avenue. And I emphasize the avenue. I'm not going to take much time because obviously I blabbed enough in the public forum about this. But I just want to go on the record and say that I think people are the same all over the city. They, it's the buy right thing that scares them. They like the process, they want to be warned, they want to be able to be in the process. So I also think the height thing is something that the public has vastly declared that they are not interested in going so high without a buy right. And that's all. I'm going to get out and let other people talk, but just to say that you guys have been very fair at this whole process and I appreciate it. And onward and upward, someone else can talk.
Thank you, Gordon. Appreciate it. Joanne, bring in whomever you want. Lynda McCaristin, Lynda, would you introduce yourself and state your address? And you have up to three minutes to talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for allowing us all to be heard. It's a great task. I'd like to, I'd like to say that my concern throughout much of this has been that we have not discussed the, the purposes clause of our zoning amendments. We have only been discussing the particulars of amending heights and things of that sort. And I, I am, I'm concerned because that those, because our zoning ordinances are the centerpiece or the mainstay of our home rule and the, which is something with which the state cannot interfere. I feel that there is a misunderstanding abroad that in fact, with regard to changes in height, people, no one is entitled to a view. And I wanted, I went back to Justice Tabet's decision against the council's decision approving Lawrence Costa's house a couple of years ago, when he found in favor of the defendants. And I'd like to just quote, comments some, some councillors made at the PND meeting and the city council meeting about people not having a right to a view leave the court to question whether some councillors voted in favor of the special permit without considering whether Costa's proposed construction is substantially detrimental to the neighborhood because of obstruction of views or overshadowing of other properties. Rather than reading 316B, which we all know about, I thought I would read Justice Tabet drawing attention to the fact that at that time, the council and, and of course, other parts of city government were pretending that didn't exist. It's like pretending that the FEMA excuse does exist and pretending that this doesn't exist. So that's, that's the main point about height is about the relation of other persons to oneself. I, I think that what, what has happened over the years that I've been here in with the Zoning Board of Appeals is that when permits or variances are granted for height, it's the guy next door who is always the one who, who, who takes, you know, takes a beating in these cases. When someone says, well, I want, I have the money, I want to make this. It's almost three minutes. It is three minutes. So is that three minutes? I think so.
Joanne's hand is up, so it is.
I think my, I think I've managed to make most of my point.
Great, thank you so much.
Neighborhoods, you're welcome. Thank you.
Speaking. Joanne, maybe, maybe you can unmute yourself when you're doing the time so we can hear you. That would be great. Okay, bring someone else in. We have Mellow Art. If you could introduce yourself and your address and you have up to three minutes to talk to us in favor or opposition.
Okay, thank you. My name is Melody Finuff. I am at 3 Centennial Lab. And I want to start off by saying that I appreciate your effort to come up with housing solutions. I know they're much needed. But that being said, I have to say I'm against the increased height allowances. The houses in R5 are very close, some are right on the boundary. And another five feet would greatly diminish the light to neighboring houses. And that impacts everything from gardens to whether you have mold in the house. So light is really important. Also, I have another concern here on Centennial. Cars idle all summer long, waiting for the bridge. And I'm also thinking that increasing the. And I'm also thinking that increasing the height barrier would to, you know, increasing the barrier to the air circulation would incre- also increase the odds of health problems in this neighborhood. Um, I understand there are special, um, circumstances. And I am a real fan of the zoning board of appeals. I've been before the zoning board of appeals because I am right on the boundary. And I had to come up with a compromise. I did not get everything I wanted, but I certainly thought it was a fair process. I got a lot of what I wanted. And I think, I think it, it is important for people, for neighbors to interact. Better for them to interact in the beginning than to be fighting for years later. Um, and I didn't want to do the construction I did if I was going to be fighting with neighbors, so. I'm a big fan of the process and I hope, um, I hope it, it remains. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Melody. I appreciate it. Uh, Steve Aiolo, you're, um, you're on next. Um, if you would introduce yourself and your dress. You have up to three minutes to talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, uh, can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Oh, good. Okay. Steve Aiolo, twenty-two Linden Road. Um, you know, I'm glad the, that Greg showed you some pictures of the YMCA and Cameron's and, and some of the other projects that have been approved recently. Because that proves that the current policy works and that we don't need to amend the current policy. All that we're looking at right now, what's being proposed is taking away neighbors' rights, council oversight, zoning board oversight. And you know, it's, it's literally un-American what's being proposed right now. Taking away zoning restrictions that we asked for. The thirty-five foot height, you know, thirty-foot height restrictions were put in place after those thirty-five foot high-end buildings were built. So some of those houses that were built, they were built before the zoning restrictions were put into place. But let me tell you what you get when you keep building up and you keep making denser neighborhoods. You get fires like they had in Salem last week, okay? Build three-story houses, continue to build them and, and tighten it neighborhoods like Friend Street, Malvernus Street, Perkins Street. We, it, I challenge any of the promote proponents of these zoning amendments to drive a snowplow or a fire, piece of fire apparatus around these neighborhoods in the middle of the winter when there's snowbanks, okay? We can't access these neighborhoods now in an emergency. And we're talking about adding more vehicles and making the neighborhoods more dangerous, okay? What you're seeing now is contractors who previously built, bought up every vacant house lot in the city and dropped duplexes on them. They're now buying single-family homes up and they're converting them to two-family homes and three-family homes and they're selling them off as condos, which is actually driving the cost of housing up in this city. And you're seeing communities like Itwich and Salem addressing that by putting moratoriums. We're looking to make it easier for the contractors to sell condos and create short-term rental units where other communities are looking to make it harder for them to do that. Now, again, the housing crutch is not a Gloucester issue and we can't legislate the, ourselves out of it. It's a nationwide issue in metropolitan areas and suburban areas. Where they need to build housing is in rural areas. You're seeing the state extend the rail line out towards Pittsfield for a reason. Because the cities and towns can't continue to be built up.
Excuse me, can you just wrap up because Joanne has had her hand up? That would be great.
I'm sorry, I, I can't see Joanne's hand. Bottom line, I have a proposal for, I've offered proposals to the housing task force in the past. I have one for you tonight. Offer any homeowner who wants to come add units to their house under the current policy, offer to reimburse them their permitting costs through the CPA money or put money into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and reimburse homeowners who add units to their houses under the current policy. Under the current policy, reimburse them for their cost because that's what the proponents say is stopping people from doing it. Thank you. I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you, Steve. Um, I'd just like to make a couple of comments before we, um, hear the other, um, speakers that want to, uh, talk to us. First of all, Pam Toby's on the call. She's the Director of Communications and Constituent Services. From the Planning Board, we have the Chair, Rick Noonan, and Jane Remsen. And we also have from the CPC, we've got, um, Deanna Fay and Chris, um, McCarthy. So I just want, oh, and Joel Favazza from the Capital Improvement Advisory Board. So lots of board members on the call and, um, um, so let's continue. Um, next up is, um, Nicole. Nicole, you have up to three minutes to speak to us. If you could introduce yourself in your dress, that would be great.
Sure. My name's Nicole Seraphine. I live at Two Hundred Street. Um, I'm located in the R five district and I wanted to speak on behalf of being opposed to the zoning board, the zoning ordinance changes that you guys are considering. I've lived in R five for over forty years. This district is highly congested area that due to the overdevelopment and the conversion of a lot of the single-family homes in the area is dealing with a lot of issues with regards to parking because a lot of these buildings don't have adequate parking to service multi-unit, multi-units being added to a single-family home. I personally, um, just from my neighborhood alone, um, there's plenty of people who are illegally parking where it's very obvious it's not parking. There are people parking on sidewalks, which is clearly illegal and, you know, we even have police officers who live in the neighborhood and nobody is doing anything about it. Then on top of that, in the wintertime when it snows, there is actually nowhere for anyone to put the snow with the current capacity that we already have in R five. I won't speak to the Salem fire issue, but I will speak to something that I experienced firsthand when a building that is, you know, not very far from our personal home caught on fire. These streets are so small in the city when you have illegal parking that the fire truck couldn't fit down the street to fight the fire. The house was a complete loss. They had to access the fire from above the home and that just doesn't make any sense to me. By approving these changes to the zoning ordinance, ordinances, you are only going to increase these issues. Then there's the issue of, a lot of these changes are really for people looking to build investment properties. They're not addressing necessarily a solution to people who, you know, need affordable housing and things like that. It really is an investment property. That same property that built, someone bought it for investment property. They've already petitioned the zoning board and got approval for thirty-five feet. Despite the fact that other residents in this neighborhood lobbied against it. Nobody seemed to be concerned about that. When you raise a building to thirty-five feet, it casts shadows onto other people's properties. And in this example, it was to the financial detriment of somebody who already had, you know, solar panels because they're not considered by the u- the utility ordinance in this town. So that building, new height, will cast shadows on their solar panels, which is not fair to that person who already invested a considerable amount of money, which is an initiative that is supported by the city. And my last comment is about the downtown area, the height restriction being raised at forty-five feet. I'm also opposed to that because I don't see any shadow studies being done in the city in regards to how much raising the height of buildings. I love old historical buildings. I get that. They've been there a long time. But when you're raising the height on the building, you're also casting shadows on the downtown area, which makes it unpleasant for people like myself who've lived in this community for over forty years. And you can't walk downtown with, you know, there's no natural sunlight. There's plenty of local businesses owned by people in this community that exist on Main Street that, that deters people from Main Street.
Nicole, your, your time is up, um, but we have heard you loud and clear, so thank you so much.
Okay, thank.
Thank you. Joanne, if you could, if you could tell me, like, make a noise so the person knows that the time is up, that would be great. You're, um, you're, okay, that would be awesome. Thank you. Okay, next up is Beverly Palmisi, Palmasi. Um, Beverly, if you would introduce yourself and your dress, you have up to three minutes. Talk to us. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Beverly Palmachi, eight Commonwealth Avenue with downtown. Uh, with the black cloud of the MBTA overlay plan hovering over us. I feel uncomfortable easing any of the zoning restrictions currently in existence, particularly as they affect the densest areas. I feel this, having the scrutiny of the zoning board of appeals is a plus. Uh, as it is, from what I understand, they approve ninety-one percent of what comes before them, so I, I just don't see that as a major obstacle to people wanting to make changes to their, uh, buildings. Um, I don't think we should open ourselves to overdevelopment because that's what I see being the end result of this. I've lived downtown for nearly thirty years and feel that we are as dense as such a small area should be. I can't imagine eight hundred and seventy-five more potential units. And who knows how many people? That ends up being quite a few people. And I have an issue with the loosening of the, uh, the B and B, Airbnb, uh, allowance there. I, that never should have been done, in my opinion. There's so much attention paid to this, these, uh, zoning rules and yet the Airbnb situation seems to just fly right through and now we have I, I don't know how many fewer units that we have for rent year-round. It, it, the, the, it, it's so difficult to find a rental now. People just can't find them. The prices are astronomical. I don't think landlords have to charge them, but they do. They charge what they can get because that's, that's, uh, income and that's business, but I really think the Airbnb situation should be, should be addressed. Um, the city of Beverly seems to have gone, uh, hook, line and sinker for density and their rents, uh, rather than become affordable, are astronomical. So when you see this put into action, you see what the results are. And I don't see the results being that there's more housing. Therefore, the housing has become more affordable. That just doesn't happen. Uh, it doesn't. I haven't seen it, uh, played out. Doesn't happen. Um, and see what's the other thing? Oh, I would like to see more deed restricted, uh, opportunities for people, uh, be it condos. Those are the only condos I'd like to see happen, uh, or rentals. Because if we're really concerned about people having housing, you have to make it affordable to not just the wealthy. Um, let's make it affordable to people who really need help and let's not.
Beverly, your time is up. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you've already spoken, would you be kind enough to go to the bottom of your screen and hit lower all hands? Um, there's at least one person that has already spoken whose hand is still up. Thank you. Um, next is Marcia Hart. Marcia, introduce yourself and your dress and you have up to three minutes.
Hi, Marcia Hart, two Fremont Street in Gloucester. Um, I've appreciated all your efforts in this process to hear the public and also the efforts of everybody concerned about creating more housing in Gloucester. Um, I can understand and agree with many of the ideas that have been put forth in the amendments, but then also disagree with the details. And what it's come down to for me is that I'm really opposed to the by right aspects of the amendments. Um, I've listened to the discussions and haven't been convinced that community benefiting housing will be the primary outcome. Um, rather, I'm concerned that it will create a development opportunity, um, instead. And, uh, somebody sent me a letter from, uh, GBH. It's an article from yesterday from the Center for Investigative Reporting. And it says, uh, that the, the changes that occur in ownership from a local resident to a group of investors is increasingly common across Massachusetts. From cash-strapped neighborhoods to Springfield to neighborhoods of Newton and Nantucket. In two thousand twenty-one, business entities purchased nearly six thousand six hundred single-family homes across the state. More than nine percent of all the single-family homes sold. That's nearly double the rate from, uh, a decade ago. And, um, the article goes on to talk about how this is mostly done by limited liability corporations who spend, um, spent five billion in Massachusetts last year, mostly bought with cash to, to rent and flip as the, um, the housing market has risen. And that rates of investor purchases in two and three-family houses is even higher. Links to research are in this article about the LLCs and how they make worse landlords than individual owners do. And that's, I think, partly why a lot of people in the community have expressed concern. I regularly get advertisements from Mike Menahan from Ocean City Development LLC telling me that he will buy my place for cash on the, you know, that day. No problems. I have one I'm holding in my hands. This is Home Investors. Turn your house into cash. Dear Marcia, I'm with your local Massachusetts Home Investors team. I can make a firm offer for your house as is that won't change before closing. If you sell to me, you don't have to do repairs, paint, clean, do anything. We're just gonna give you money. I mean, I, I'm ad-libbing a little bit at the end. Call about our cash offer. So this is why residents are concerned. I have called Mike Menahan's office, who sends me four, uh, a year.
Marcia?
Yeah.
Your time is up. Um, if you could just wrap up, that would be great.
I, I've asked them to stop calling me. I've emailed them and asked them. I continue to get these. These are aggressive LLC corporations and they will find these zoning amendments, uh, an opportunity. It does exist and it's rampant in the country and in Massachusetts. I think people want affordable housing in Gloucester. I think we all agree on many, many things. But people have some real concerns about development, not for the community. Thank you. And I don't mean to exclude other people. I, other people can come and live here too. I did. But I want housing for a community of people who have built the community and, and helped to make it a wonderful community. Thanks.
Thank you, Marcia. Um, Peggy Hegarty-Stuck from Action is on the phone. Would you introduce yourself and, um, give us your address? Thank you.
Sure. Hi, um, my name is Peggy Hegarty-Stuck. I'm the Director of Action Inc., which is located at one eighty Main Street in Gloucester. And as, um, some of you folks know, one of the things that our agency does is assist people in finding housing, maintaining their housing. And, um, I spoke at a previous city council meeting and have written a letter of support for their proposed changes. Um, and as I noted before, there's been a very long and thorough process to vet all of these changes to, uh, zoning in order to help support a more diverse range of housing opportunities. Right now, almost fifty percent of both renters and owners in Gloucester are housing cost burden. It's forty-nine for renters and forty-seven for homeowners, so. Um, it's only going to continue to get worse and we have to start working on several fronts in order to improve our community situation. And as we discussed before, zoning is a key piece of that strategy. We're building housing. We're helping people maintain the housing they have, but we can't build our way out of this issue overnight and we need to get creative about where we can find opportunities in the city that meet with the character of the community that provide some parity for people, um, within the zoning code because there are some things that can happen as of right in some districts, but then other folks need to go to the ZBA for special permits, so. Greg has done an excellent job, I think, of presenting the information and kind of going through all the detail about what these changes do and, and don't provide for people. And there are still plenty of guardrails in place to prevent some of the, I think, um, projections people are making about what will happen once these changes, um, if these changes were to go into place. So I think trying to stick to, you know, looking at the community as a whole, thinking about what your name. you know, looking at the community as a whole, thinking about what your neighbors are struggling with and the fact that housing costs continue to rise. Most people in our community, almost fifty percent, most people know people who are struggling to just pay the rent and stay in the housing they have. It's it's a very significant issue here in Gloucester. And when we do needs assessments, where we knock on doors, talk to people at the supermarket, look at data time and time again, housing is the number one issue for people. So I strongly support the city's effort. And just remind people that a group of folks have been working on this for quite a long time. It's not an overnight sort of idea. And I feel like the city's done their homework in terms of vetting these changes, and um, my organization supports that.
Thank you, Peggy. And Peggy, would you, um, for some reason, you're in as a panelist? Um, and I'm not sure how that happened, but um.
I don't know. I don't know either. It just popped up on the screen.
Okay, um, so I just want to please mute yourself, and if and if it's not too much, maybe you could just dial in um, as a regular um caller.
No problem.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Uh, next up is Joel Favazza. We now have seventy-four attendees on the call. So Joel, your name and address, and you have up to three minutes. Thanks.
Thank you, Joel Favazza, twenty-eight Middle Street. Um, I know change is hard. I'd like to remind all of you, it's what Gloucester has done repeatedly for the past four hundred years. The Gloucester of twenty twenty-two looks notably different than that of nineteen seventy-two, or nineteen twenty-two, or eighteen twenty-two, and so on. It's not a bad thing. It's just a natural progression of our history and our future. And the proposed changes before you tonight, I believe, are a natural continuation of this process. And more importantly, they make sense. As I mentioned at the last public hearing, for the past twelve years, I've made a living as a permitting attorney. These proposed changes will make things easier for property owners and literally eliminate work for me. And I still support all of them because, as I said, they make sense. Um, and after all, they are the product of, I think, five years of work by the planning department, the planning board, hired consultants. A lot of people with a lot of expertise have put a lot of work into getting these right before they came to you. Now, you may hear some detractors claiming that the proposed heights are far too tall or out of scale, or that they might, you know, destroy the city skyline due to the harbor. Wait, no, sorry. Those are actually real documented complaints from Gloucester citizens in eighteen seventy, objecting to the design of our current city hall, which is now a treasured landmark. But you might hear upset citizens tonight tell you that the proposed changes around multifamily use will devalue their property or alter the makeup of their neighborhood. Wait, no, sorry, I got that mixed up again. Those are actually real documented complaints from Gloucester residents objecting to Poplar Park in nineteen sixty-two, which now houses over seventy-five senior citizens in need of affordable housing. There are over six pages of signatures in opposition submitted to the council trying to stop Poplar Park. But you might hear passionate concern that these changes will create too much traffic. Nope, sorry, again. That's actually real documented complaints objecting to Varian building the Applied Materials Facility, which now employs over a thousand people and generates over three hundred thousand dollars a year in property taxes alone. What I'm trying to say is that with the same fearful nightmare scenarios being recycled over and over, literally for centuries, it's easy to get them mixed up around here. You could say that for the past four hundred years, one of the few things about Gloucester that hasn't changed is this existence of a fearful vocal minority worried about change itself. Fortunately, for the past four hundred years, our city leaders have, for the most part, not been fooled into believing a very vocal minority fearful of change actually represents the will of the city or what is best for the city's future. And they've not been pressured into allowing vocal opposition to objectively good proposals, like was before you tonight, prevent the city from moving forward toward a better future, even if the future looks different than things look right now. So I urge you to please find the courage your predecessors were able to muster. Ignore the same old, the sky is falling fear tactics your predecessors pushed past in their time and help Gloucester continue to grow and evolve as it enters its fifth century. I urge you to please vote yes in the amendments proposed. I thank you so much for all your work tonight, and that's it for me.
Thank you, Joel. Please don't forget if your hand is still up, um, if you would take it down, that would be great. You've already spoken. Val Nelson, um, introduce yourself and your address, please.
Thank you, Val. It's Valerie Nelson, Seventh Sunset Point Road, and I'd like to make sure to introduce into the record some of the Lanesville perspectives, and hopefully I'll have time to weigh in on uh R five and downtown and also future ways to address these issues more properly. I would say that um, in the Ward Four meeting that you had, and I have submitted these comments before, and I want them to go on the record, that in spite of this extended planning process, I think that the advocates of this got a number of important things wrong, specifically on the thirty-five foot by right. It intrigued me to hear that all these other neighboring communities were at thirty-five feet, and we were an outlier. And then when I went up and down the coast and actually looked at the zoning ordinances and what they had, coastal communities are not all at thirty-five feet by right by a long shot. And I've sent in comments before, I hope that um they get considered seriously. I've written to the council even though my letter is not in the communications. Look at Rockport, thirty feet. Um, Orleans, thirty feet, Wellfleet, twenty-eight feet. You look at sections of Plum Island, sections of Marblehead, what comes across is a pattern that wherever you have a coastal community with views of the ocean, they pretty much all restrict the height, knowing how significant an asset that is. And if they do even do thirty-five feet, it's with a two-and-a-half-story restriction. So I think this is an important example to consider, which is that from our perspective out in Lanesville, and I think this is true along our entire coastline, so much of our housing is built along the water's edge in Winger Sheek or Eastern Point. In other communities, that the planning board got this wrong. Other communities that have coastlines along the ocean do restrict the height, and we have it in our uh, some protection on height in our current zoning ordinance. And I think that the conclusion that we certainly made in the Ward Four meeting, and I have heard over and over, is that we don't believe that going to thirty-five foot by right is anything appropriate. There are avenues to go to the ZBA or the city council if the neighborhoods agree. But I'd like to say, because I have spoken about, I think it's appropriate for me to speak from the Lanesville outer ward perspective. But I do believe that my neighbors do recognize we have our own version of affordable housing problems. We have.
Val, if you wouldn't mind wrapping up, that would be great.
Please wrap up. I would just like to say that as an outer ward resident and listener to my neighborhood, we are very concerned, as Gordon Baird said, about our downtown. I think we sympathize with the needs that they have articulated, and I would say one more thing, which is that our view is that zoning is not the appropriate solution to our affordable housing questions. We need to look at ARPA funding, Housing Production Plan relook. What are the communities doing? Please do not give by right solutions that are unworkable and will lead to in the wrong direction for the kinds of Airbnbs, outside investors, devastation of our views, et cetera. Let's move on together to really solve this problem.
Thank you, Val.
Better race.
Next is Gully Hand. Would you introduce yourself and your street? Welcome. Can you unmute yourself, Gully?
Thank you. Hi, uh, Gully Hand or James Hand, thirty-six Rocky Neck Avenue. And tonight, well, I appreciate all the work that's been done, and I appreciate the fact that the council decided to uh only have the thirty-five feet by right uh for three-family houses and remove the single and two-family after listening to all of the people in the wards who cited view obstruction, frayed neighbor relations with decreased ability to weigh in on an abutting neighbor's proposal and matters of character of the neighborhood and scale. Um, at first, I thought this was an okay compromise, but after thinking further, I realized this change could and would make it more difficult for people to buy single and two-family houses of compliant dwellings uh even with this new proposal. And and I and the reason is that a developer or a real estate investment company could outbid the would-be family home buyer on the strength that they could build a larger structure up to thirty-five feet, where the single and two-family would only have a thirty-foot um and could build a larger structure of three condos or three rental apartments. Now, you might say, wait a minute, this this we this isn't really possible because we're we've only made this apply to three-family homes. Compliant three-family homes, but you're forgetting that all that would stand in the way of a potential buyer would be a change of use permit from the zoning board. This wouldn't be a particularly hard hurdle. Any abutting neighbor who might fear the resulting height and its detriment detrimental effect to his property next door could not bring up that potential height issue before the ZB in the ZB ZBA hearing because it is only a use hearing. And after, and also the dimensional setbacks are the same for single, two-family and three-family in under three-point-two-point-one. So after getting the change through, uh, the the neighbors would lose any ability to complain or any recourse because uh of the new zoning that would guarantee thirty-five feet by right, all other things being the same. So this is why that change will drive up the prices for single and two-family houses. I know you 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 weren't thinking of that when you suggested this. And it would and it will also decrease the ability of families and and children of Gloucester residents to buy and own single and two-family housing houses also. Therefore, and because therefore, I urge the city councils to deny the approval of this thirty-five feet by right in in the in the zoning districts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gully. Next speaker is Ron Gary. Ron, would you introduce yourself and your address, and you have three minutes to speak to us. Thank you. You're on mute. If you're calling in on a phone, could you hit star nine or um can you unmute yourself on your computer?
Here you go. Am I better right now?
Yep, we've got you now.
I apologize for that. This is my first time doing this, and so I'm kind of muddling my way through. My name is Ron Gary. I live at two oh nine Atlantic Road here in beautiful Gloucester. And I'm going to modify my words because I had timed it out earlier at four minutes, and so I'm uh, I've got to wipe off twenty-five percent of that. But uh, the first question that I had is, what is this proposal that is going to be to the benefit of the citizenry that lives here? I don't see it. I don't see that future. I don't know where that benefit is, and it was addressed mildly for it, but I didn't see that. Secondly, I have to ask, what's the impact on the majority of citizens who live here now? Let me answer that by starting with change. Change, especially with all the older populations such as Gloucesters with approximately twenty-four percent of its population over sixty-five. I happen to be one of them. And who are inherently, all of these seniors are averse to change, but there's more of a poignant point um, in the beginning of additional changes, it's inevitable. The first begets the other. The change you'll see if these voting zoning amendments pass can be summed up in an old Arab proverb. If a camel is allowed to get its nose under the tent, it will be impossible to prevent the rest of him from entering. In other words, once the nose of change is allowed under Gloucester's tent, the amendment changes such as increased dimensional heights limits will ultimately lead to more of everything, more cars, more traffic, more massed housing, and more consumption of our limited and precious natural resources. Think of the water ban just last summer. And finally, what does Gloucester mean to its citizens? Let me give you a perspective that the majority of the people that I've talked to can easily and will relate to. For me personally, Gloucester is a deeply personal experience unlike no other. It has a spiritualistic quality that is rare. It is built upon a giant rock crafted millions of years ago, bounded by an ocean, a beautiful harbor, and a mighty river that gracefully winds itself between two remarkable divides of this majestic city. And the Cape Anne Peninsula that thrusts itself to the northeast is home to what generations have referred to as Gloucester's light. As a result of these natural wonders, we learn about ourselves, our purpose, our raison d'etre, which means the reason to be. We draw inspiration from Gloucester's immeasurable yet fragile natural beauty that surrounds us and the raw power of the ocean that is humbling in its immense immensity, yet so vital to everything that is and once was Gloucester. Gloucester is under siege. Our only hope is that our Gloucester politic won't value more of adding zoning expansion that will ultimately tear away the fine woven fabric we call home in a place of that earthswell camel that I'll call progress and who will for forever continue his nose under what was done. I therefore ask you to vote no. No to the nose of the earthswell camel.
Thank you, Ron. Um, also want to welcome Sean Henry from the planning board, who has joined our call. Next is Louise Palazzola. I recognized your email, Louise. If you could introduce yourself and your address, and you have up to three minutes to chat with us. Thank you.
Olympia Palazzola, fifty-seven Weston Avenue, Gloucester, Mass. Um, I I am, I'm really concerned about the height only because we're so tight in downtown and on uh by by Portage Hill, that those two areas, it seems like are the areas that are targeted the most and and um, when we hear that a developer just bought both shaws, think of the development that could come just from those two buildings. Um, boy, if he puts a lot of units in that spot where Shaws is on Railroad Avenue, just think of the traffic that goes on to Prospect Street. It can't handle it. It can't handle it. And something that big, I'm sure, has to go before the boards. But in the same respect, it could happen here, and it could happen at the other shaws. And the traffic there into the rotary is really bad. So being a big, big building, uh, even halliard, uh, just such a big, big building in Gloucester, we're not that place. We are a fishing community that has to turn to tourism for ourselves to survive. But, you know, for our own selves, making a two-to-three family, that's one thing. But we're all scared to death that if that comes about, especially to downtown people, it's gonna change us. People will sell and go out of town because it's gonna be bought up by developers. You know, and and that scares the heck out of all of us. Um, I wish I knew the number of people that have uh either petitioned you or wrote to you, um, especially that live downtown against this project. Um, it many people have spoke so many times. That in itself should say something to you. And there was one other thing I just, I I'm not so sure that I understand all of this process. Can somebody on Eastern Point, um, uh, Lanesville, um, and all the outskirts of Gloucester, can they do all of the stuff that's uh on these uh height uh exemptions? Uh, is it everyone? We seem to just be talking about downtown and being hurt downtown, but um, can I go to uh Eastern Point and build a three-family by right now at forty-five feet if you agree to this? So I guess that's where I'm going with this, and my my feeling is that please listen to the people that live downtown. Most of the people in the council do not live downtown, and you're very lucky if that's the case. I choose to live downtown, or I wouldn't be there. So I've grown up down around the corner from where I live now. I was at thirteen Weston Avenue, and I haven't moved far. I'm at fifty-seven now. So uh, keep in mind, we love Gloucester, and I don't want these changes to happen. With it's gonna happen because they'll go to the boards now, and at least we can speak against them and maybe get some restrictions on what they build. So I think that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Louise. Next person up is Deanna Fay. Deanna, would you introduce yourself and your address, and you have three minutes to chat with the council? Thank you.
Sure. It's Deanna Fay. I live at three Barbara Lane in East Gloucester. Thank you. Thank you for this meeting and for letting me speak. I wanted to urge the council to vote in favor of all of the motions before you tonight that are included in this second set of zoning amendment changes. Gloucester has a critical housing shortage for our moderate and low-income residents. As Peggy from Action stated, almost half of the people that live here are currently housing cost burdened by unaffordable rents, mortgages, or needed home repairs. Some of us who have been following housing through work or just personal interests have understood our local housing needs, supply, demand, and production constraints because we've been following it. Some were made aware, made aware through the research of the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen Housing Production Plan. And others are just painfully aware of these conditions because they live it daily with rising rents, the multifamilies that they call home that are being sold out from under them. Younger people unable to compete in the current wholesale market and overhoused seniors with little options to downsize. In order to meet the housing needs of this community, we need zoning policy changes that support a diversity of housing types. We need to create opportunity for increased housing production now. The city of Gloucester doesn't on its own have the resources or the programs necessary to fund the creation of housing on a large scale to, to meet, to meet our demands. The community is reliant on our property owners and even investors to create the new units that we need. You, as city council, have the ability to create the conditions necessary for others to create new housing for us by reducing existing regulatory barriers which limit the production of housing in our city. While the passage of these amendments are neither going to solve our housing issues nor will they result in dramatic change or adverse changes to our building's landscape, to our community's landscape. But your role is to, is to set the conditions needed for housing to be created. Conditions that incentivize and make the process of creating new housing in Gloucester somewhat easier for property owners. I urge you again, please take a bold and important step tonight to vote to approve these zoning changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Peggy O'Malley, would you introduce yourself and your address? You have three minutes to speak to us, either in opposition or opposed, or in favor. And you are on mute. Could you unmute yourself? The mute button is typically on the bottom of your computer screen. If you're calling in by phone, you can hit star nine. We still can't hear you, Margaret O'Malley. If you could unmute yourself, that would be great. If you can hear me and you have a computer, if you look on the bottom left of your screen, you will see typically a little microphone. And if you can unmute that, it would be great. Right now it would have a slash, a red slash across it.
You want me to bring someone else in?
Yeah, why don't you bring someone else in? Margaret, if you could keep trying, we'll, we'll keep you on the screen and, and just don't talk if you unmute yourself, and we'll call on you next. Thank you. Julianne McKenney, you have up to three minutes to talk to the council. You have, if you could introduce yourself and your address, that would be great.
Julianne McKenney, ten ninety-seven A Washington Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. What strikes me the most about these amendments before us is why elected officials are in favor of changes that are wildly unpopular with what appears to be the majority of the public. There has to be a better way. Thank you.
Thank you, Julianne. Margaret is still muted. Margaret, if you want to dial out and try coming back on via a phone, that might help. We have Jane Fox Dobson. Would you introduce yourself, Jane, and give us your name and address?
Yes, my name's Jane Fox Dobson. I live at fourteen Becker Circle, Gloucester, Mass. First of all, I would like to thank all of you for your time and working on the zoning amendments. Out of curiosity, I did check today the vacation rentals by owners website. There are currently a hundred and sixty-seven rentals. Twenty-four rentals were less than two hundred dollars a night. Seventy-seven rentals were two hundred to four hundred dollars a night. Forty-three rentals were four hundred to six hundred dollars a night, and twenty-three rentals were six hundred to a thousand dollars a night. In comparison, the website rent.com advertised four monthly rentals ranging from two thousand one hundred and seventy dollars to four thousand dollars per month. And the website zillow.com advertised eight rentals ranging from one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars for a single bedroom to a five thousand nine hundred dollars per month. So to me, it's quite clear that changing the zoning is not going to solve the issue regarding the lack of monthly year-round rental properties or affordable housing. It's only going to increase the opportunity for investors to purchase properties and remodel or build to maximize rental potential. I believe these VRBO properties are not taxed as commercial properties, although it is clear they are not residential. The increase in the population will be a burden to our current infrastructure, which should be addressed prior to even considering any zoning amendments. Again, I am concerned with infrastructure such as water pressure, public safety, public health, emergency evacuations, so forth and so on. So to me, any necessary improvements will be a financial liability to the current Gloucester residents that love the city as their home, while investors just keep getting richer and richer. I'm for affordable housing, but I don't think we're addressing it properly. So therefore, I urged that we currently vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Councilors, I see no hands raised at this point. Would everyone look at the panel? I see John Haley and LJ. So Joanne, if you could bring one of the two in, that would be great. John Haley, introduce yourself and your address.
Yes, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
I'm John Haley. I live at five Aline Terrace in Gloucester, and I've been a resident of Gloucester for thirty years. I think I have two points to make, and a number of them have been made, but the first one has not. Mr. Katamatory's presentation has understated the potential impact of these changes on R five. If you look at his presentation, he states that there's a potential for five hundred and forty-eight units or lots. That's lots. If you look at the first one, he says that there's three hundred and seventeen lots that could go from one to three family. So in effect, he has underestimated the potential impact by over three hundred. So I think it's important to realize that the potential impact for the R five changes is not five hundred and forty-eight, but over six hundred and fifty units that could be added. And you have to take into account all of the comments you've heard in this district of traffic and parking and crowding this. So I think, one, let's be a little bit more clear on the potential impact of units. We've talked about investors. They're going to maximize their potential. They're not going to minimize their potential. So if anything, this is way understated. The second, I think the real key here is you have provided as a council significant opportunity for everyone to speak, and I thank you for that. You're hearing that today. Everybody who speaks has spoken so far today. Eleven are opposed, three are in favor. If you look at the letters, and I would encourage you to get all the letters that have been written to the city council, it is far outweighed opposing this. It is not that we oppose the ability to make these changes. It is by right. And you are stripping neighbors from the opportunity to understand the impact on them. And I think that is critical. We want an open. We want to provide housing for people, but we don't want to impact the neighbors without them being properly aware. We have seen the Border Zoning Appeals has done a great job in having hearings and making changes. I thought one person earlier made a great comment about, okay, let's waive fees if these people are going to create more housing. So that the one objection that has been made about turning this is it's the additional cost to the person making the change. If they're going to add affordable housing or additional housing, waive the fee. So anyway, I thank you for the process. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, but I really think that you're stripping the neighbors from the right to at least be aware of the process and aware of something that's being done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. We have the last hand that's raised, which is LJ, which I believe is Lisa Riggsby. Lisa, if you would introduce yourself and your address, you have up to three minutes to talk to us. Thank you.
I only see one hand up.
Okay, she
She has her hand up, but I don't know what happened.
Okay. She is back up with her hand up, Joanne.
I only see one hand up.
It's up again.
Okay, there we go.
Lisa, would you introduce yourself and your dress? You have up to three minutes to talk to the council. Thanks.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thanks. I just want to say you've heard so much debate about this, and I think that the outpouring of oral, written, and petitioned public comment across all wards has been overwhelmingly in opposition to these motions before you tonight. Listening to people tonight, I, I kind of had to rewrite what I was going to say because what it really brings to light to me is that Gloucester, with all of the planning that's happening in our city, we have a clear need for an overarching master plan. And the foundation of that would be a growth management strategy. I think that voting on these zoning changes done in a silo and without an overarching master plan is siloed and flawed. I've read a lot about upzoning, not only in our state but across our country. And I agree with a previous commenter that change is inevitable, but we have the opportunity to look at the future of our city in a bigger, broader way with all of the planning that's happening right now. Some of the issues like parking and congestion long precede these zoning amendments, and we need to address that. We also need to address removing by right the height, removing the height restrictions or increasing the height restrictions. And Mr. Katamatory's slide shows, and I've seen this so many times in presentations, where they're like side-by-side heights on a flat road. Yeah, we don't, that's not our natural geography. We have a very diverse and hilly geography and losing views, shadowing. All those things are real. These aren't like, this isn't NIMBYism or naysayers. So it's as is. I totally cannot support these, and I would ask you to not. But it doesn't mean that we have to shelve everything and forget about like the evolution of our city. We need to look at whether it's climate resiliency in our coastal areas, our roads, and of removing a butter's rights. I sent many letters to the city talking about some conditions that could be included in the approval of by right, which were design, shadowing, our tangled water and sewer lines, which is a very big issue here in Ward two and Ward three. I know that Councilor O'Neill on one of the calls mentioned that her water and sewers transverse somebody else's private property. Let's take
Lisa, if you could conclude, that would be great. Thanks.
I just think let's vote no and take a look at the bigger picture that the awesome city council that we have right now has the capability to do and bring the plans together. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've got some more hands that are up. So who's next? Philip Corey, would you introduce yourself, your address? You have up to three minutes.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
We can.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Phil Corey, and I live at twenty-eight Pine Street. I'm a lifelong resident of the downtown area, and I won't purport to understand the full character of the city throughout history. And for the most part, I've stayed out of city politics and decision-making in general. I've listened to a handful of opinions so far in tonight's meeting, as well as in past zoning meetings, and a lot of good points have been made. We covered a lot of different subjects, and I'm not going to redo any of them. But to summarize quickly, it looks like on the pro side, we have relief for housing needs and opportunities for expanded investments. And on the con side, we have risky deregulation of housing standards with this by right change and, and concern for a handful of potential impacts like safety, parking, seasonal risks like fire access in the winter, and traffic congestion in the summer and, and others. I, I won't, I won't go any further into those. But personally, I, I don't think I stand to gain or lose from this decision going one way or another, but I do oppose the amendments. Quite simply, the main reason I have is I'm not interested in losing the current level of control in the existing process. It's, it's not a matter of fear or projecting. I think, I think it's simply a matter of interest. And, and this may just be my opinion, but I don't think, or I should, I'm not going to speak for everyone, but I, I think that there are several people, if not many people, citizens of Gloucester that are just not interested in these amendments going through right now. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Appreciate it. Next, we have Sean Henry. Would you introduce yourself, your, your address?
Hi, Sean Henry, fourteen Pleasant Street, member of the planning board. My wife and I moved to downtown from West Gloucester because we, we like downtown. I worked on these amendments as a planning board member, not to destroy downtown, but because I, I love living downtown and want downtown to remain vibrant. Wasn't going to speak tonight, but I just wanted to address some of the things that were said earlier. The, the by right uses in all this are only allowed when the lot meets one percent of all existing zoning requirements. You can't do the thirty-five foot by right unless you meet all lot other, lot requirements. Same for forty-five feet, same for the three-family by right in R five district. You must meet all zoning requirements before you can exercise the by right use for any of these proposals. The thirty-five feet, I think the council made an excellent amendment to that to allow thirty-five feet limited to three-family creation. limited to three family creation, because I think that addresses specifically what the housing production plan uh was hoping to address. The forty five feet, I'm particularly interested in uh for CCD and CB, because right now I I walk in my neighborhood, and we have empty buildings throughout the downtown area that will not be developed if they can't be developed as um economically viable, mixed-use, multifamily residential units. If if we want to see our downtown stagnate, um, like it's starting to do right now with multiple empty buildings, then don't vote for the forty five feet, leave it as is, and and we won't see anything of value go in at either CVS, the Santander building, Fisherman's Outfitters, et cetera. I think we need the forty five feet to to help uh inspire development on those. And finally, somebody said we need a new master plan. We've had a master plan for over two decades that we failed to act on. We we have Plan Two Thousand One, which suggested these very same amendments. Not again in detail, but in generalities, exactly as the housing production plan did. And we failed to act on it because we've had the naysayers again and again over the last two decades fight against any change except for their own properties. It's it's fine to do an addition on your own property. It's not so much for your neighbor. I I think really the the whole notion that we have to redraft Plan Two Thousand because we don't know what to do fails to understand that Plan Two Thousand One and the Housing Production Plan have been telling us what we need to do for the last two decades, and we as a community have simply failed to do it. And I think we're failing to do it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Tom Fava, do you introduce yourself, Tom, and where you live, and you have three minutes to talk to the council?
My name is Tom Fava. I live at eight Morland Road in Gloucester. Um, I'd first like to compliment Mr. Gary, who spoke a few minutes ago, living on Atlantic Road. And um, I don't think I could add or or say anything differently other than what he said so well. Um, the gentleman that you spoke, Sean, um, I respect his thinking as a member of planning. It makes sense to increase heights in very specific areas. I refer to downtown as the central business district, and his reference to empty buildings and the forty five foot height makes sense, and perhaps this board will give consideration to his concern. However, there are two issues that um I have addressed in letters communicated to each of you board members. Um, the first is um, the last meeting I watched a week ago, uh, you showed particularly that you listened, and more so you heard uh the concerns of the neighbors. Uh, I am asking this evening that you bring forth listening and hearing once again, because what I heard have heard this evening and what I hear on the street is that the majority of residents, neighbors, voters, and townspeople are against the majority of these amendments, specifically the height requirements, accepting the central business district and the matter by right. I think if you eliminate those two in terms of concessions, which you also made a a week ago, I believe, Councilman Gro put forth three conditions to approve a restaurant. Um, if he could come forth again, he showed um, good concern and insight uh to the situation we find ourselves in this evening. Um, I think the majority of people in Gloucester would be thankful. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I wish you well in your vote.
Thank you, Tom. Um, we have seventy five attendees right now, and I see no hands raised. Counselors, would you confirm that you see no hands raised right now?
None at this time.
Seeing none, um, let's go to the next part of our public hearing process. And um, I, oh, Peggy O'Malley is back. She's going to try again, um, because we didn't get to hear from her last time. Um, so can we bring her in and see if we can't get her to um to speak to us for three minutes? Peggy, um, if you could unmute yourself, uh, you're back and um, you're unmuted. Yay. Thanks for trying again. I appreciate it.
Oh, gosh, thank you for your patience. Um, I'm Peggy O'Malley. My official name is Margaret O'Malley. And um, I live at fifty six Washington Street, right downtown. Um, uh, it's great living downtown. There are more pluses than minuses, but there are some minuses. And um, one is um, that we um have lots and lots of um, uh, problems with too much traffic and uh not enough parking. Um, I think if you were to take a ride through the um downtown district, not Main Street, but the residential streets, um, after people are tucked in for the night and try to find a parking space on almost any residential street, you would have a lot of difficulty finding a spot, or it would be tricky. You might have to park farther away than you like. However, when you add in another several hundred um cars, et cetera, on those same streets, it's going to be very difficult. We already have some significant air pollution downtown. And as a registered nurse, I can tell you that what we also have in Gloucester is um very high incidence of heart disease, lung disease, and that's like uh COPD, um, uh, emphysema, things like that. We have them also among our young kids, not just older people. And you can see why in downtown we have those higher incidences. Um, if I go out on my back porch, which is far away from the street, and you think it would be cleaner in the back of the house, um, that I have a glass table, and I have to walk, wipe that off every single day, it is filthy, and that's from poor air quality. We have lots and lots of truck traffic, and I'm just very, very concerned. I can't, I um want to emphasize what Steve Aiello said about the dangers of fire and how um we really need to think before we make downtown any more congested than it is. I um am a nurse, and one of my first jobs was working at the burns unit at Shriners uh Burns Unit, taking care of children um who had significant burns. And um, I look around sometimes, and I think if there was a fire next door to me or across the street, just what Steve says, um, the the fires can't get, the fire department can't get in. They can't get into the buildings and rescue people fast enough. Um, otherwise, I I support what everybody else has said. And um, thanks so much.
Thank you, Peggy. Appreciate it. Now we have CR. Would you bring CR and CR if you could introduce yourself and your address? That would be great. You have three minutes to speak to us. Thank you. Could you unmute yourself? If you go on the bottom panel on your laptop or computer device, you should see a mute button, which looks like a microphone. You will see a cross on it. If you could uncross it, then you should be able to speak. If you're calling it on a phone, if you can hit star nine, you will unmute yourself and be able to speak to us. CR, um, we're not able to hear you because you are still muted. Your microphone has a cross on it. On the bottom of your computer, if you can hear me, if you can unmute it, that would be great. It's usually right on your screen.
I believe CR is Catherine Ryan.
Okay. Catherine, I've um, I know you've spoken on Zoom calls before, so I don't know if this is a issue of um a technical issue or a new system you're working on. You need to unmute yourself so we can hear you. Um, if you try to get in, if you want to try to call in, um, the information is on the city website. Um, the phone number. If you want to write this down, um, Joanne, could you read the number? I didn't make a copy of the agenda tonight. So um, Catherine, if you could write this down, that would be great.
It's one, three oh one, seven one five, eight five nine two. And the meeting ID number is eight seven eight, oh seven one two, oh nine eight seven.
Would you just say it one more time, Joanne, so she can write it down?
Sure. The phone number is one, three oh one, seven one five, eight five nine two. And the meeting ID number is eight seven eight, oh seven one two, oh nine eight seven.
Okay, um, we're going to continue. Um, Catherine, if you're able to get in, we will call um for a point of order or um we will modify the rules of procedure and listen to you. Um, so thank you. Um, so the next order of business on our public hearing is a report from our city clerk on correspondences. So um, Joanne, if you would tell us what the correspondence and communications have been?
Okay, the correspondence in regard to what we published in the um newspaper and the deadline, the deadline to submit um public comments, emails um for was at the end of the business day on May fifth. And those um communications are included in the packet in which you see. Um, we had one in favor. Um, in opposition, we had ten in opposition. Petitions in favor is the letter from the Housing for all Gloucester with twenty one names. And the petitions in opposition, we received two petitions from um Don't Boston My Cape Ban with a total number of three hundred and fifty four signatures in opposition. Any communications that came in after May fifth have been forwarded to you if you were not on the email. And you have seen all of the communications, including one that I forwarded at six o'clock. I think it was after six o'clock tonight.
Thank you. So the next order of business in our public hearing protocol rules of procedure is council questions. So at this point, counselors, um, Greg, if you would turn your screen back on, if you would, um, it's time for us to ask our planning director questions of things that have come up that you want clarification. And um.
Madam President, if I could just clarify, um, I was listening to the comments. Obviously, I'm not going to speak to um opinions that, you know, about, you know, everybody's entitled their opinion on how they've interpreted and received these uh amendments and whether or not they support them or not, but just in terms of the accuracy of um some of the data that I presented. Um, in the slide that I presented, um, there is one column that that was representing what can happen right now by right, in that in the R five district, you can propose a single family or a two-family, and you can convert from a one to a two-family. So there was a number associated with that, and then there was a number that was associated with still that allowance of of all those units that are singles to be converted to a three and twos to a three and potential new three family. And what I was suggesting was that the effect of these proposals is the difference between the two. So while there there was that one number that was presented of the eight hundred and seventy five, I represented the five hundred and forty eight, because again, that's what's being potentially allowed by the proposed amendment. So I just, just in terms of the accuracy of of the numbers, and again, those were were kind of cautioned with that not every one of those is possibility because of other potential restrictions of the location of the structure on the lot, whether they comply, um, and any other utility or road frontage kind of requirements. So that was just something in terms of just making sure that, you know, the accuracy of what was presented to you is is the best estimate that can be made. And it was presented as the difference between the two, because there is potential right now in the district for additional units under the current zoning. Um, and then again, um, representations on height and other communities. I also presented a slide in past presentations that showed kind of the regional allowance of um thirty, thirty-five, and even greater in some in some um communities. There's a lot of variability, but I won't also um, you know, speak anything other than, you know, Ms. Nelson also provided some some detailed information about specific communities and coastal communities that do have districts that have a similar um height restriction of thirty feet. Um, I think that may be a moot point now that the proposal is is at this point um, uh, potentially to multifamily of three or more units. So I just wanted to clarify those those things just based on the testimony that that was received.
Thank you so much, Greg. Okay, counselors, it's time for questions. Um, Councilor.
You know, I can't go very long without hearing my own voice. Um, Greg, uh, oh, at one point during tonight, uh, someone mentioned two projects, the YMCA and the Harvard Village as being products of how the rules, the existing rules uh of our zoning have worked. Um, can you clarify how that is in terms of actually how they apply to our our zoning amendments, our our zoning rules?
Sure. Um, I think they're great examples of great projects, um, but they were both filed as forty B applications. Um, essentially, what what someone can do or an applicant can do when they are particularly promoting an affordable housing project that has at least um twenty five percent of the units that are going to be uh deed restricted as affordable. Um, and and that level of affordability can vary, but it would have to be eighty percent of the area median income households or less that would be eligible for the units. Um, they can apply for a comprehensive permit. And in the comprehensive permit process, um, they only have to apply to one jurisdiction, which is um the Zoning Board of Appeals that reviews comprehensive permits on behalf of um the city. Um, and in those cases, they uh essentially annotate in every way that those projects violate our zoning ordinance, um, or that they don't comply with our zoning ordinance. And um because of the need of affordable housing in the community as well as in the state, um, the basically, if you are a community that doesn't have as many affordable housing units, um, the ten percent number, um, the overarching need of affordable housing kind of trumps our local zoning. Um, in which case, they again just have to receive one permit with essentially a lot of variance um from the zoning ordinance, including height, density requirements, um, even parking and other and other uh dimensional requirements, um, and receive one permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Can I quick follow up that?
Sure, go ahead.
We've had a lot of input from a lot of people, and one of the common threads throughout a lot of this input, especially people opposed to the the current amendments, is that they support affordable housing. They want to see more affordable housing in Gloucester. That's that's where we should be going is more affordable housing. Based on the kind of properties that we have available and the zoning restrictions that we have in place, and the fact that we've 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 shown great resistance to wanting to change those, how do you see affordable housing being addressed, notwithstanding the the mayor's uh plan of potentially using some municipal lots for for uh creation of affordable housing? But by and large, would you would you expect that most affordable housing uh needs are going to be met by by effectively more Harbor Village YMCA forty B projects that come in because our existing regulations are so restrictive?
Well, sorry, I think my, could you still hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, hold on a second. I just lost my speakers. They got tired. Okay, now I can hear you. Um, so I I would say that um there's there's a big difference in process. Um, if. If, you know, we've made amendments to our inclusionary ordinance, we have a certain number of units that are, are required on that 15% of projects that surpass the threshold. But just to look at it, you know, kind of a comparison in the downtown environment right now, if someone were to pursue a similar type project of that scale, it would require not only potentially special permitting from the zoning board of appeals, variances from the zoning board of appeals, and then city council special permit. So, I think there was one other comment that I, I don't know that I, it was specifically a thrust or a justification for any of these amendments in terms of cost to an applicant. But time is a significant one. As you know, your city council special permit at a minimum, if everything, if the stars were aligned for an applicant and they applied to the council with a project that you saw on its face as soon as it walked in the door, that it was something that you were wanting to approve and met all the criteria and requirements of the ordinance, they probably can't get out of that process in less than three and a half to four months just by the noticing requirements, the subcommittee meetings, and the public hearing. So, you tag on top of that the fact that if some of these amendments are not made, some of those existing requirements will require variance. You're looking at a double stack process of the three months or so with the zoning board of appeals to enable them to file with the city council. So, now you're into a six-month process at a minimum before a project like that could be approved. You know, we've been fortunate to have partners in, in action in North Shore CDC as well as the YMCA. They've been, surprisingly, they listened to the, the housing production plan discussions. They recognize the need in the community as well. And they know it's a, it's a good environment to introduce the type of housing that they develop because of the local need. And I think those, those projects were, you know, well cited, you know, one addressing, you know, every, every type of household, the other being restricted to senior housing. And they're two great new options in the downtown area, and they're actually 100% affordable. So, do I think they, the process that we have in place, if that was trying to be replicated by a mixed market project with inclusion, it's, it's, it's a long path for an applicant. It's a long path for the community. And there's, and there's a lot, I mean, there's all about community input. There's no question about, you know, wanting something to make sure that it's becomes, you know, a vital part of the fabric of the downtown area. But at the same time, I think we're, we're going to have to do better in terms of what we are conveying to partners like that and others, what the expectation is. With a very low seal, you know, kind of height of 30 feet on Main Street, dimensional requirements that tend to push things towards the center of a lot. The Fisherman's Outset or, the Fisherman's Outfitter is a perfect example of, of what the requirements tend to kind of do, even in our downtown environment, kind of pushing it in more of a suburban kind of development form centered on the lot. And also parking requirements that, that might also limit what can happen. So, long, long way of saying, you know, if, if there was an avenue for those projects to comply with our zoning ordinance, I think they would have taken it potentially, but again, a six-month process versus a one-stop, which required a lot of variance listed out, running from height to dimensional requirements to density is why those projects pursued the 40B route.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Questions, counselors? Okay, I'll take a turn. Go ahead, Council Worthley. Would you unmute yourself? Great, thanks.
Thank you for everything here today. A couple of questions. This is more of a council process question. I just want to know if before each of the motions, could we identify how many votes are necessary for passage? And potentially the reason why one might be X, one might be five votes. That would be helpful for all of us. And maybe even a summary. We had a little confusion last week. A yes vote would do X, a no vote would do Y. I think that would be helpful to all of us, just to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you. So, it's my turn. I will ask a question. Greg, I've got some numbers for you, and I just would like you to just check me on the authenticity of these numbers. They were numbers from the building inspectors, Inspector Bill Sanborn. It's mostly regarding proposed amendment number two in general, which is a three-family by right in R5. And, and also some of the other ones as well. But Bill Sanborn gave me the numbers of, in addition to just the normal application fee, our building inspector said that the cost can range from $1,500 to $2,500 per case on the average for certified site plans, architectural drawings. And if an attorney is needed, can average around $3,000 to $3,500 according to Joel Favazza, who is a local land use attorney. So, does that, do those numbers sound right to you in terms of what you normally hear from folks that are trying to get permitting and?
So, I think Bill probably has a better understanding of, of, of that just because of, you know, he, he looks at the fees that come in for the zoning board applications. He also generally reviews one, two, and three family. I'm typically involved in, in projects that involve the planning board. And I can tell you, those numbers are much higher for, you know, based on the scale of the development. But again, if you're hearing numbers, you know, directly from, from a local attorney, it gives you a sense of, of what they charge. And then, you know, the development of a plan, I'm sure, I, I know counselors have done things on their property and then they know what the cost of a surveyor is. It's not cheap, and it's also something that is in high demand. There's, you know, so, so I think, you know, those, those ballpark figures, I can't speak to them specifically because they weren't reported to me. But there's certainly a cost associated with that. I think the counter, you know, that was, that was raised is, you know, what does somebody have to submit when they, when they propose a, a project to the building department? So, some of those costs are, are equivalent. You know, they still have to provide a plan of their addition or their new construction regardless of whether they have the zoning board. But again, the activity there is also a time factor. You know, there's a three-month process, just like any special permitting process or variance process. The, the burden of a special permit variance are, are two different things. An applicant has to demonstrate a hardship. So, that's, you know, that's some of what this discussion about is, you know, what is the comfort level with folks with these particular amendments? And when you enact them and when you say by right, that's somewhat what somebody can plan on versus in some cases, they have to, they're supposed to be presenting a hardship as to why they can't comply with it. So, that's, yeah. I think I answered that.
Okay, that's really helpful. Counselors, Counsel Gross.
Yeah, I would just like to, you know, as I pointed out in the last meeting, those costs that the building inspector told you about would be no matter what, whether these amendments pass or not. Whoever is doing the project is still going to have to pay for the site plans, the surveys, or whatever else is necessary, as Greg just said, but I just want to make sure that people understood that point, that those costs are there whether these pass or do not pass.
Again, and I'd say the only exception would be the time and the potential expense of representation, but otherwise, you're correct.
Right, that, that has nothing to do with what the building inspector said, though.
Right, but more to do with what Joel had said about the legal attorney. Other questions? Thank you, Counsel Gross. Counsel Grow. You're muted.
It's true, though, Greg, that all, all of these projects that have to come before a permit for a special council permit or ZBA permit are also appealable to the land court. So, that is an added potential for expense and cost to an applicant moving forward if their, if their project is denied.
It is.
Any other questions to, to Greg? Counsel O'Neil.
Did we get an answer to Jeff Worthley's questions? As in how many votes are needed for each amendment?
Yeah, Counsel Grow is going to mention that for each narrative of each vote. So, he will explain that before each vote.
Thank you.
Counselor Memmer.
I'd just like to mention that Catherine Ryan is, is back on the line. She's trying to get into, if you'll have her speak.
Okay, so, counselors, without objection, can we suspend the rule of procedure to allow Catherine Ryan to try to speak? Seeing no objections, Catherine Ryan, would you unmute yourself? And you have up to three minutes to talk to the council in favor or opposition? Would you introduce yourself and your address? If you're calling in a different way than the last time, if you, if you hit mute your little microphone on the, typically in the bottom left of your screen, if you could just unmute that, or if you're calling in on your phone, hit star nine. Okay, I'm, I'm
Good shot.
We've, we've tried as hard, and I know you've tried as well. So, all right, counselors, any further questions to Counselor, to Greg Katamatory? Seeing none, I see no hands raised. So, I'd like to then close the public hearing and ask Counselor Grow for a committee report, and we're going to do each one of the amendments separately like we did in the meeting several weeks ago. So, you've got the floor, Counselor. Thank you.
Right. Some of this will be a little bit repetitive, but I think we want to encapsulate what was discussed at the, the last P and D meeting. On April 20th, 2022, planning and development met to discuss the remaining proposed zoning amendments that had previously been tabled. Planning Director and interim Community Development Director Greg Katamatory once again offered his detailed presentation as to what the amendment, amendments mean, the scope of their impacts, and reiterated that they are products of the housing production plan and are designed to promote the development of a range of housing opportunities across all categories, not just deed restricted affordable housing. The original planning board amendment number two was previously separated by planning and development and made into separate motions, the first of which was the change of the permit granting authority for three-family construction in R30, which was approved by the council at the last meeting. The second part of that amendment was for the creation and or conversion to three-family by right in the R5 zoning district. And that's what we're dealing with tonight. So, Amendment 2B, to amend 2.3.1 residential use number six, conversion to or new multifamily or apartment dwelling three units. Mr. Katamatory explained that the bait, that based solely on lot size, frontage, wetland percentage, and land use code, there were 791 out of 2,183 total lots in R5 that could potentially convert to or build to three, excuse me, convert to or build to three units. Of the 791 total lots, 317 could be converted from the single family to three-family. 226 could be converted from two-family to three-family, and three lots could build a new three-family. What was not considered in this count were lots that were non-conforming for other reasons, building and siting setbacks, Title V parking, Title V parking utility restrictions or private deed restrictions reasons. This change would not apply to any non-conforming property. And those property owners would continue to have to seek relief in the, from the ZBA. There was much discussion over the definition of multifamily, since in some cases it refers to three-family properties, and in others it refers to four units or more or mixed used. Gloucester zoning ordinance use table 2.3.16 specifically refers to three families. There was some discussion on density, parking and traffic concerns. There was also discussion that non-conforming lots would still need approval through the ZBA process, and that the proposed amendment was consistent with the conclusions of the housing production plan that had previously been unanimously approved by the city council in 2017. This amendment requires five votes. The reason it requires five votes is that it is for the creation of multifamily three units or larger. That's a state change that has lessened the burden of zoning change that creates multifamily properties and units to five votes. So, this would pass with five votes.
Counsel Worthy, are you, are you clear on that vote? Thank you. So, Counsel Grow, for the rest of these, would you do your motions first and then do the narrative after? That would be great. Okay, so, so what I would suggest that we do now, if you would move to the committee recommendation on the, the
Committee recommended on the motion by Counsel Gilman, seconded by Counsel Grow. Planning and Development Committee voted by roll call, two in favor, one opposed, to recommend that the city council amend the zoning ordinances, section 2.3.1 residential uses, use number six, conversion to or new multifamily or apartment dwelling, three dwelling units, by allowing such use by right in the R5 zoning district. Subject to new information and or debate that results in the public hearing, the zoning amendment is deemed to be in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance, and I so move.
I'll second it.
All right, on the motion.
We have a motion by Counsel Gilman, and we have a seconded by Counsel, a motion by Counsel Grow, seconded by Counsel Gilman. Are we clear on what the motion is, Counselor? Okay, so, let's, let's have a discussion and would prefer, oh, any, any further matters on the narrative, Counsel Grow?
Nope, we're good with that. We can go into discussion.
Okay, and counselors, let's try to talk about the pros and cons of this particular amendment before we get too into, we don't want to do a straw vote, if you will. That will be, and this is our opportunity to discuss this with each other, okay? So, Counsel Grow, we will start with you.
I think the, the important thing, the aspect of this whole process has been that the housing production plan and by extension, the, the planning board has worked to provide, try to find ways that we can effectively bleed some of the pressure off of the pressure cooker that is, is Gloucester housing crisis. And in doing so, by, by modifying some of these zoning requirements to allow the creation of what is relatively few units in a, any given situation, will ease some of the pressure off and provide some opportunity for housing creation, especially infill housing. I think, you know, there's, there's been a lot of opposition to this idea that we should be providing opportunities for the creation of, of new housing because the process already works. Well, it clearly is not working because our, our process, our process is, is creating a, a situation where where we're, we're getting more and more in trouble with the availability of especially mid-range housing, not affordable housing and not upscale housing, but housing that, that normal average families can afford. And I think in this situation, the relatively few potential lots that can be developed within the R5 district allows us the opportunity to create some infill housing. Granted, you got to remember that of all these lots that are available for construction, relatively few are going to be acted on. Not every property owner is going to suddenly turn their house into a three-family unit. And I think that we're going to see gradual increase in development, gradual increase in density, but at a rate that can be accommodated by the local community. I do find, take a little issue with some of the comments that have come in from the public that suggest that, that we all want to help participate in the creation of housing. But when given that opportunity, we heard resounding opposition to the creation of that housing in their neighborhoods. I think that was a mistake. I think we, we erred in our decisions, but that's, that's under the, under, under the water here or under the bridge. I think we need to, to take advantage of the, of the small opportunities we have for increasing incrementally some of the change, because if we don't do this, we don't, we're going to find ourselves exploding at some point, and I think that's going to be way more detrimental to the community as a whole.
Who would like to speak next, counselors? Counsel Gross. Would you unmute yourself, Tony? Thank you.
I have a question. Jason, do we have that narrative that you read? I'm not finding it anywhere.
No, it's my narrative from the, from the
So, that's not from the minutes or anything?
That's, that's based on the minutes of the, of the meeting.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I just condensed and collated them.
All right.
Same with the last one.
I, you know, one of the disappointing things that's happened during some of this, the correspondence we've been getting is, has been what Jason was just talking about is the the exclusion of, you know, anybody coming to town. That's been disappointing. It hasn't weighed my, my position any. There's been a lot of talk about the Housing Production Plan, but one thing that was noted in the Housing Production Plan was that residents of Gloucester require cars to do their errands. And then it was never addressed on how to accommodate that in the Housing Production Plan. I find that that absent, you know, addressing that with the rest of it was something that should have happened back then. So that's because I know that from living downtown that it is vehicles, parking is an issue and we also we also credit where there's municipal parking lots close by. And I don't know if we've kept any record on how often we've sold a parking space down there. That would be a good thing for us to know. So anyway, just those two things I wanted to bring up. I also feel that, you know, people have to understand they're all, everybody's, everybody's in favor of affordable housing. But you can't, you, you can't create it without accepting your own responsibility in your own neighborhoods to make some room for that. So I think that those are things that need to be taken into consideration because we have a severe housing crisis. And, and we need to deal with it and we need to do it. One way or the other, we need to deal with it. Either we forget about it and say that's who we are, or we deal with it in a, a responsible manner and as, as a community and not as just certain segments of the community. So I think there's a lot of work to do. Regardless of how these things go, there's a lot of work to do in this community and I hope everybody rises to the occasion and actually becomes a lot less inflexible about what goes on.
Thank you councillor. Who else would like to speak on this amendment? This is our discussion. This is our chance to discuss it. Councillor O'Neill.
Thank you. I don't believe that by passing these amendments, it's going to make housing more affordable. I, I just don't see that happening. I see people selling to developers and moving out. That's what I see, or stay getting stuck here and being crowded. That's what I foresee and most of the people calling in and sending letters are opposed to this, so. I think that I will vote away my constituents want me to.
Thank you councillor. Any councillor member?
I, I want to thank everyone for the public process and the engagement that we've had even during the COVID period and through Zoom. You know, I, I think our public process has been a phenomenal thing and that Janice Stelludo and all the folks that were involved back in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, two thousand and one with Gloucesters Plan two thousand that had some, some fifty-four meetings, public meetings and input from the community. We're, we're right behind her and she very much approve of the work that we're doing here tonight. At this point, I feel like this is overdue and that we as councillors, while listening to our constituents, and as Tracy has said, I, I think we've done an excellent job of doing that, that we need to take some leadership here and some responsibility and to work with the municipal professionals that guide us with input and guidance. I think it's time for us to make some of these baby steps really that have been on the table, not just for five years or ten years, but for at least twenty years now, that things that were proposed back when John Bell was our mayor and they were shot down largely, but for all the same reasons that we're hearing again now, just as Attorney Joel Fabaza commented that it's, it's an unfortunate reality, but I think for us now, we need to take some leadership and these are small steps. I, I'm sensitive to the parking and congestion issues. But, you know, Gloucester has many three-family homes. I was with a constituent the other day, a difficult, small colonial house, but in fact it was a three-family, a legally permitted three-family. The owner lived on the top floor, the first floor in the basement were all rented out. He had plenty of parking and it was not a, there was no consequence or retribution on his neighbors and neighborhood for that, but it's just, it's a flexible option that some people enjoy the opportunity to exercise. Makes living a little more affordable. And there they are, that's the small A. So again, I, I hope that the council will step up here and take some leadership independent of all the powerful voices of our, of our democratic process and the constituencies that are speaking out to us. I think we need to refer to our city planning professionals and to the planning board and to the work that's going on before us to bring us to this point today.
Thank you councillor. Any other councillors that have not spoken? Seeing none, I would like to speak on just two things. First of all, I took note of Peggy Hegarty Steck's information, seeing that she oversees action, that forty-nine percent of our renters are cost, are house burdened and forty-seven percent are house burdened, which is a huge issue in this community. And I believe that our P and D heard very closely what people felt about the height by right for thirty-five feet. And, and, and we modified that just to include multifamily thirty-five feet by right. So we've really made no changes to the one that for me personally in Ward four was the, the resounding concern that people had over and over again, fourteen of twenty-one people in my Ward four meeting talked about the concerns about height by right. That was the common theme. So I just think we need to make a baby step forward in terms of accommodating some type of progress towards workplace housing, work, housing that a, a younger couple could afford or an elderly couple that would like to age in place. And we need to remember that by right on this particular matter, this, these opportunities for a three-family by right in R five are not. You're not able to be permitted by right are setbacks, Title V parking, utility restrictions or private deed easements. These owners would have to seek relief from ZBA and that is not by right, so. And then the numbers were specifically five hundred and forty-eight lots would apply, of which three hundred and seventeen could be converted from a single family to three. Two twenty-six could convert from two to three family. And that there were new, three, there were three lots that were undeveloped, so if they maxed out to three families, it would be three lots at, I think that's nine units if I did my math correctly. So those are things that I feel are important and and if anyone else would like to speak before we call the roll, councillor Worthy?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Thank you councillor Grow for your work on Planning and Development Committee. I'm extremely grateful for the process we've gone through here. I think the council has risen to the challenge. We've had hundreds and hundreds of emails, phone calls. I think that we've done well to serve the public and to listen. The process has been all encompassing, all encompassing and exhaustive. But it's not exhausting. I find it actually very invigorating. We're all saying the same thing. We want affordable housing in Gloucester. There is a affordable housing crisis. Now, the proponents of this have said many times, this is not going to create affordable housing. It might maybe possibly create something that could be affordable. Of course, the driving factor for all of this will be market conditions. And if this were going to create affordable housing for Gloucester specifically for Gloucester residents, I could consider it with more seriousness. But I'm, I struggle with the concept of maybe possibly creating something that's affordable. Our city staff has been remarkable. I think our city planning department and our city clerk's office has really stepped up, especially through all the Zoom meetings that we've had. Our volunteers and advocates have been very effective. And our Planning Development Committee, I think deserves a lot of credit for the work you've done. I think we've been able to agree and disagree professionally and I like that we've been able to maintain that throughout this process. And I also very respectful that the, the appreciate that the outlying wards didn't disappear after they got what they were looking for last week and the advocacy, I think they've added to this dialogue has been very helpful. I wanted to commend councillor Grow for what he did last week or two weeks ago with one fifteen East Main Street. You were able to capture neighborhood input. And we agreed and disagreed, you still advocated. And the reason why that worked is because it wasn't something that was able to be done by right. Had we done by right in that application, there were things that were, conditions that were added that were probably helpful, not only to the neighborhood, but to the applicant. And that was remarkable. And so when we think about what we're eliminating here, it's simply saying to people, we don't want to hear what you have to say. And I think in any good relationship, marriages, business, sports, whatever it is, the ability to be heard, the feeling of being heard is valuable. And so I don't know how we can say to our residents, to our voters, to our taxpayers, we can build a three-family by right or we can go up to forty-five feet and you have no right to talk about overshadowing. You have no right to talk about the kinds of things that impact your neighborhood. Doesn't mean that if people apply, that the neighbors are going to be heard and get their way every single time, but they'll have the opportunity. And I struggle with anything. No, I don't struggle, I'm sorry. I cannot support anything that denies neighbors the right to speak. Doesn't mean, I don't think that everything should be built or nothing should be built, but they should have the right to do that.
Okay, thank you councillor. Can we share the floor right now? Council, anyone else that has not spoken and we can go back to ask councillor Worthy if he has something else he would like to add. Councillor Grow and then back to councillor Worthy.
I just want to clarify this concept that by right issue. There are scores of examples of property owners that can build by right right now on their properties in a variety of circumstances. Because they have the proper setbacks, they have the proper frontage, they have the proper, they have the proper engineering for the sewer or the septic system. By right exists in the city, all over the city, okay? In every residential district, there are by right constructions. We're simply saying in this particular situation, in the, in the, in the occasion where a property owner has the setbacks, the, the, the frontage, the parking requirements, everything that is required of a conforming lot within this zoning district, they can come and do a by right construction. They could build a two-family by right without discussing anything with their next door neighbors. They could build a single family by right without discussing anything with their neighbors. So it's not that there isn't the opportunity in the city to build by right. There are lots of them. We're just saying that in this, this situation with the, with the relative scarcity of available lots, that a by right situation would, would, would ease one, would take one restriction off the ability to create more infill housing. So by right exists and will exist and does, you know, is pervasive across the entire city. So we're not getting rid of, you know, we're not, we're not losing this concept of by right construction. It exists and it will continue to exist.
Thank you. Any other comments, councillors, in the discussion? Councillor Gross? Oh, I'm sorry, councillor Gross and then councillor Worthy, I'll come back to you. Go ahead.
I just have a question for Greg, if I can.
Councillors, we're going to suspend the rules of procedure to ask our planning director without objection.
Yeah.
Thank you. Go on.
Councillor Grow just reminded me that the, the parking, it, am I correct in that in the R five district, the parking requirement is one space per unit? And then in all the other districts, it's one and a half spaces. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Worthy?
Yes, I, I don't want to go back and forth with councillor Grow on this. I think that the, we're entitled to have a difference of opinion. But when I served before, I was on the Planning Development Committee and I chaired it for two years. And we had a reputation of approving a lot of permits. But I had attorneys thanking us not for getting the permit, but for allowing the neighborhood to make their project just a little bit better. And because the neighborhood was involved, they're less likely to litigate. And we talk about the real cost. The real cost is time. And if there's litigation, then that could be years before something is built. But if we include the input of the neighborhood, we can increase, improve the projects, so there's less likelihood of litigation. I've experienced it firsthand, sitting in your same exact seat councillor Grow respectfully. We had things come before us and the neighborhood got to speak and we incorporated their ideas into the planning. It's simple, it works. Is it, is it as simple as it could be? No. I don't know that the problem, the system's not working. I think the plan works, the process works perfectly and we should trust that process and trust ourselves to have good judgment on these sorts of things.
Thank you. I, I think we should call the question and at this point, I think we're ready for a roll call vote. And we need five affirmative votes for this to pass. So we'll start with councillor Grow.
Yes.
Councillor Majota?
No.
Councillor Memard?
Yes.
Councillor Nolan?
No.
Councillor O'Hara?
No.
Councillor O'Neill?
You're on.
No.
Councillor Worthy? Councillor Gilman, yes. Councillor Gross?
No.
The motion, the amendment fails. There are three in favor and six opposed. Next order of business councillor Grow.
All right, we are on to Amendment Five, GZO section three point two point one dimensional requirements for single two and three-family dwellings. Do you want me to read the motion first?
Yes, please, thank you.
You want it seconded as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So just, just for clarification, zoning narratives that I'm reading are, as best I can, a factual recitation of the discussion as a whole. It's not meant as an argument one way or the other.
Councillor Gross has his hand placed.
Yeah, Jason, I was just asking because I was looking frantically for it, that's.
No, no, it's a fair question. No, no.
That was the only reason I asked.
I totally get it. And it's usually included in the minutes after the fact, but
That's all.
I just wanted to make sure that there was, there's two things here. There's the narrative and then there's my particular position on, on an issue. So the, the Committee Recommendation on a Motion of Councillor Grow, seconded by councillor Gilman, Planning and Development Committee voted by roll call, two in favor, one opposed, O'Neill, to recommend that the City Council amend the zoning ordinance section three point two point one dimensional requirements for single two-family and three-family dwellings by amending the maximum building height to thirty-five feet for three-family dwellings in the following zoning districts. R thirty, R twenty, R ten, R five, CCD, bless you, CB and Village Business, VB. And to amend the dimensional table is necessary. Subject to new information and or debate that results from the public hearing, the zoning amendment is deemed to be in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and I so move.
Second.
Okay.
We have a motion by councillor Grow and seconded by councillor Worthy. So the narrative councillor Grow.
Narrative, this amendment is proposed by the Planning Board, but allow for the as of right height for residential structures to be thirty-five feet in all residential districts, as well as CCD, the Central City, Civic Center District and CB, Central Business. There was discussion regarding whether it should apply to all residential units and there was consensus with two councillors that if the intention of the height change was to increase the potential for added housing in alignment with the Housing Production Plan. was to increase the potential for added housing in alignment with the housing production plan, then the thirty five minute thirty five foot limit was appropriate for three family construction as it added necessary room for appropriate design. There was some confusion about whether VB was originally intended to be included in the thirty five foot amendment or the forty five foot proposed amendment. A motion was made to amend the proposed amendment to remove one and two family structures as well as R eighty, R forty and RC forty, since those districts do not allow three family construction and include Village Business VB as it was in fact part of the original proposal. And further to add, quote, and to amend the dimensional tables as necessary. And that was passed two to one in favor, leaving us with the committee recommendation as read. Should this motion succeed, it would allow thirty five feet by right only for newer conversion to three family construction. Any relief above thirty five foot would require city council approval in accordance with existing ordinances, and there will be no change to, there would be no change to current ordinance. The zoning Board of Appeals remains the granting authority for anything above thirty to thirty five feet for one and two family construction. This amendment requires five votes. Again, for the same reason that it encourages the development of new or conversion to multifamily, three family construction. And that's the narrative.
Is everyone clear with that?
Questions? Good. And on the motion?
So we have a motion and we have a second by Council Gross, Grow and a second by Council Worthly. Who would like to begin the discussion? Council Grow.
Again, um, you know, without repeating what I said previously about uh, looking at the intentions of the housing production plan and again, the the planning board and their efforts to create opportunities for new infill housing. I think we made the right call at Planning and Development to eliminate one and two family as options on this because, one, I think it was so over overly controversial. But again, it didn't really commit to the concept of what the housing production plan intended, which was to create new housing and more housing in those in those structures. The thirty five foot, as was mentioned, has design issues that, you know, there's a, there's a desire for new construction to fit in with the neighborhood and to fit in with the with the existing uh, structures at thirty feet. The three family house would have to be generally speaking, a flat roof structure, break boxing construction. So the thinking was is that the five foot increase in potential for this design would actually create housing possibilities that were more in line with the local community which they were being constructed. The, I think, again, we we eliminated obviously the districts that don't have any multifamily construction. I think that was a a simple move and a wise move to make, but I think if we're going to genuinely try to increase housing capacity in the city, that this is a, again, a pretty nominal step in that direction. But it is a step, I think, in the right direction. I'm done.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to suspend the rules of procedures without objection, counselors, and ask Greg Catamatory a question or two. Seeing none, seeing no objection. Um, thanks, Greg. You're probably trying to get to the the Celtics game at some point, but um.
I didn't even, I didn't even think of that. Thank you for reminding me of what I'm not doing.
So, um, one of my questions is, um, could you describe physically why thirty five feet by right for a three family dwelling is more aesthetically pleasing for neighborhood character which differentiates a flat roof from a a pointed roof, a traditional roof, um, and and how that relates to um, the height of the different floors, if you will?
I think I'd probably explain the rationale in a slightly different way. Um, and that's in that, you know, again, pointing out that a number of structures that are particularly um, where multifamily exists now, again, it's, it was more in the in the downtown districts. Um, and again, allowed by special permit and certain other districts. Um, but it's really kind of coupled with the, again, we have many structures that are over thirty feet right now. Um, they may be approaching thirty five feet and the conversion to a three, a third unit might involve dormers and other kind of additions to those structures. And again, um, that was to be accommodated by an increase to thirty five feet. So it's really if you're going to construct a three family to have, you know, a good sized living space for each of the units, if it's in a in a stacked environment, um, again, it doesn't discount the fact that something can be constructed as um, as more of a townhouse style. Um, we don't have a requirement that it's um, units are vertical or even occupying spaces on two floors, for instance, um, in in one structure. So it was really to try to create some some more flexibility and also recognizing um, that many of the structures that might be two family right now in the downtown area, maybe older structures that are taller and allowing for some of that use of that third floor space. Um, typically, you might have to also add an additional egress and those types of things. Um, so again, trying to kind of work within the setback requirements, but also providing a little bit more additional vertical space for the third unit.
Thank you. And my second question is kind of a a philosophical question and seeing the the concerns that a lot of people have, particularly about height by right on the coastal flood plains, which I assume could include multifamily three units that we're talking about right now. Has the planning board, would they consider looking at something like what um, Marblehead has where they have thirty five, thirty five feet by right except in five shoreline districts in the harbor front district where the maximum height of all buildings should be thirty feet? Is that a theoretical possibility that is something that we could look into at some point? Based on best practices and what makes sense here in our community, which is so much surrounded by water that everyone is really begging to see and not be shadowed and to have the view.
You said at some point, I don't think the planning board is really going to entertain height again for a while. Uh, you can see, you can see how this has been through the history and Joel provided some some interesting commentary on on uh, centennial kind of timelines. Um, this has come up a decadal or or maybe a little bit more than that. Um, and again, you know, around the single and single and two family. You know, again, I I, you know, Counselor Worthly said, I appreciate this process because it sometimes it galvanizes the community's decision on something, so um, I don't, I don't see us returning to that issue. I I think it's an important one as we consider um, climate change and the potential impacts in our flood zones. Um, and that's again, going to be something for for the council to consider either on a case by case basis. Um, and maybe that's the approach that um, I'm hearing a lot about tonight, that people um, prefer the case by case basis. Um, but you know, it's going to get to a point where um, if it starts filling up agendas and becomes something that's, you know, five and six, you know, a week or a month on an agenda, um, you're gonna have to address it in some way. Um, but again, you know, a varied height situation, I I wouldn't be surprised if it's not the top priority for the planning board right now after the last, oh, I don't know, six months of testimony around it.
I I understand and I empathize and um, truly appreciate the work of the planning board, so I I totally understand. Any other, um, any other parts of discussion on this matter, counselor? So, um, I will share with all of you that I'm I'm still conflicted on this particular one. Um, I had voted in favor of this at P and D and I'm really, um, I'm really struggling with this for a lot of the things that I've heard. You know, the, um, I was delighted that we agreed to eliminate the maximum height to thirty five feet. With one and two by right for one and two family, I thought that was really fair. I'm still, I still look at a multifamily, a three family dwelling as necessitating more, a little bit more height and, um, but I, I still understand the benefit of going on a site visit and and getting involved with the process. So, um, this is, this is a real, this is a real struggle for me. So having said that, unless there's further discussion, let's call the roll. Um, and we need five votes for this. Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
No.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
No.
Council O'Hara.
No.
Council O'Neal.
No.
Council Worthly.
No.
No.
Council Gilman. Yes. Council Gross.
No.
The motion fails, the amendment fails. Six opposed, three in favor. Um, next order of business. Council Grow.
All right, uh, this is regarding amendment seven to amend the Gloucester zoning ordinance section three point two point two dimensional requirements for multifamily dwelling and their accessory uses other than signs. Want to make it very clear that three point two point two deals with multi multifamily dwellings or or multi use dwellings of four units or more. So it's, it's not the three units that we just dealt with on that front. So the committee recommendation, uh, we split this into two motions, so I'll read the very first motion, which I'm referring to as seven A. The committee recommendation on a motion of Councilor Gilman seconded by Councilor O'Neal, the Planning and Development Committee voted by roll call, one in favor, uh, two opposed to recommend that the city council amend the zoning ordinance section three point two point two dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses other than signs by amending the maximum building height to thirty five feet in the following zoning districts, R thirty, R twenty, R ten and R five. And I so move.
Second.
Um, Council Grow made the motion and was seconded by Council Worthly. Is there a narrative, Council Grow?
Uh, again, this this amendment was, as proposed by the planning board, would increase the by right height allowance for multifamily dwellings in the Civic Center District and the Central Business Districts to forty five feet. This proposal deals with multifamilies of four units or more. Four multifamilies is defined as residential quality above
Counselor, is this, isn't this the thirty five feet?
Yes, but I'm I'm giving you the narrative where this came from.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm I'm sorry. Go ahead.
This proposal deals with multifamilies of four units or more or multifamilies is divine defined as residential dwellings above commercial and retail space. Mr. Catamatory explained the rationale behind this amendment that these districts are already home to buildings in the forty five foot height range and that by allowing it by right would encourage redevelopment of buildings that are currently underutilized and that could support the creation of housing units above the ground floor. He further added that there were recently constructed and proposed projects in the forty five foot range, including the completed Cameron's project on Main Street, as well as the proposed YMCA conversion on Middle Street. Counselor O'Neal questioned the absence of village business in the amendment, to which Mr. Catamatory responded that most of the buildings in village business typically were not more than thirty five feet. Motion was made to include village business in this amendment, which failed one to two. And it was then decided by unanimous vote to separate the treatment of thirty five and forty five feet as separate motions. Discussion, Council Gilman cited various communities and their height restrictions of between twenty eight and thirty five feet, some with limits on the number of stories allowed. The final motion failed one to two. Uh, this amendment requires five votes. So, again, I'm going to read, if I could, I'm going to reread the the recommendation of the city council, which was that the uh, Planning and Development Committee voted one in favor, two opposed to recommend that the city council amend the zoning ordinance three point two point two dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses other than signs by amending the maximum building height to thirty five feet in the following zoning districts, R thirty, R twenty, R ten and R five. And then reread that to clarify that this is only applying to residential multifamily dwellings in residential districts. This is not applying to, we have separated out this, the Civic Center District and the Central Business, which we'll deal with in the next amendment, dealing with forty five feet heights. So is that all clear?
It is clear. Thank you. On discussion, counselors, who would like to speak on this amendment?
Oh, you know, I do.
Go ahead, Council Grow.
Uh, this is, this is really, this and the next one are extensions of what it is that we want to try to do with uh, facilitating and and encouraging the development of multifamilies, especially in areas where they are working as multifamilies above neighborhood businesses or or other kinds of construction. Four families and above uh, is definitely more dense than three families, but if you can put two units side by side and and one more floor above that, you're given the opportunity for creating smaller, more densely constructed units in the space, which is arguably going to be more affordable than if it is created as a single family or even a two family. So again, the idea being that we're going to create opportunities that allow for the creation of multifamilies in these districts. The important thing to remember is is that this is only a height change. It does not change the requirement for a project like this to come before either the ZBA or the city council for a special permit, depending on, I don't have the use chart in front of me, but they are all subject to special permits of one regard or the other. So this is not a by right, I can just go and build it. The by right aspect of it is that I don't have to look at thirty five feet as being necessarily the the hindering factor in me being able to design a structure to bring before the ZBA or the city council for consideration. I think a lot of times we say, well, you you can come, but you're going to have to get a variance for thirty five feet. If we say, look, design something and let's see if it fits in the neighborhood, we'll have neighborhood input, we'll have public hearing. That's the way to go about doing this, not saying, well, you know, if you design it at thirty five feet, you may or may not get the variance, but we're not even going to talk to you until you, you know, you bring it. This allows a developer or a or a property owner to create a a project that is then presented to the ZBA or to the city council in its entirety for its consideration with full neighborhood impact input. Um, I would suggest supporting this, but um, I'll just leave it there.
Thank you, counselor. Further, a discussion, Council Gross.
Uh, I have a question for you, the Greg or Counselor Grow. Um, and that's probably just because I haven't, I'm not as immersed in it as you have been. You're saying that it's also, it applies to multi use. I'm not seeing that anywhere in the language. Does that mean, does multi use, does a multifamily above a multi use? Consider?
Yeah, I I maybe, I may have confused that with 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 the forty five foot. And the fact that we don't have village business in this particular thing, the original discussion was about the fact that village business, you can have residential above commercial retail usage. Uh, this would specifically be with residential only. And Greg can correct me if I'm wrong, but I I believe that that's the case.
You're right on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, I will call the roll and um, I believe it was Council Gross made the motion, it was seconded by Council Worthly, and we need five votes to to support.
Again, because of the creation of multifamily.
Exactly. Thank you. Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
No.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
No.
Council O'Hara.
No.
Council O'Neal.
No.
Council Worthly.
No.
Council Gilman, no. Council Gross.
No.
Um, the motion, the motion fails. Seven opposed and two in favor. Next order of business, Council Grow. Seven opposed and two in favor. Next order of business, Counselor Grow?
All right. We're batting a thousand. This is going to be the second part of amendment seven. On a committee recommendation, on a motion by Counsel Gilman, seconded by Counsel O'Neal, the planning and development committee voted by roll call, two in favor, one opposed, to recommend that the city council amend zoning ordinance, section three point two, point two dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses other than signs by amending the maximum building height to forty five feet in the following zoning districts. Central Civic District and City Cent- City Center, CCD, thank you. I'm, I just can't get it out of my mouth. And CB, Central Business, subject to new information and our debate that results in the public hearing, the zoning amendment is deemed to be in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance, and I so move.
Second.
Okay.
Counselor Grow made the motion and was seconded by Counsel Worthley. Narrative, Counselor Grow?
Yeah, I'm going to have to. Okay, so this is the amendment that would allow for the creation of up to forty five feet by right and designed, but not by right in terms of building. You'd still have to come before the city council for a city council special permit. Structures up to forty five feet in the Central Civic District and the Central Business Districts. Again, as, as, as Sean Henry on the planning board pointed out, that the way that we are going to revitalize downtown is to increase the potential for added residential units above existing retail spaces. That kind of development will encourage the creation and the, the driving, the economic engine to promote more retail and commercial use of those properties. And we currently have a number of underused or unused properties that are, are sitting fallow. The, the thinking is, and I, I agree with it, that if we create a more vital downtown district, especially in the central business area, this is not the, the marine side of Roger Street. It's the landward, landward side of Roger Street and Main Street and around City Hall. You're going to create an opportunity for greater concentrations of people that, you know, hopefully we, because of the fact that there's already parking issues, that most of those parking spaces would be accommodated in municipal lots or down on Roger Street. But you're going to create more people downtown and that is going to be a positive, net positive for the city. So I, I'm obviously supporting this and, and I, you know, I know this is a little bit of a, a bit of a tongue in cheek joke, but you know, I, I feel like we really need to get one tonight. And if not, I think we ought to think about amending our, our city motto of a build not for today, but not for tomorrow either. Because I think we're, we're sending the message that we're not really interested in sending, seeing any, any change that's going to help alleviate what is a clearly evident housing crisis and a long-term thing that is going to be, you know, we're, we're not going to see the net results of this for five, 10 years. But at this rate, we're not going to see anything for twenty, thirty years, except for the price of properties skyrocketing even farther than they are, you know. Change happens by, by two means. Either happens incrementally or it happens dramatically. And we're setting the table for dramatic change as opposed to being, I feel thoughtful about allowing for incremental change that we can, you know, there's nothing that says that if any of these amendments passed in a year from now or two years from now, we saw a real negative impact on the city, that we couldn't come back and amend and say, you know what? We thought it was a great idea. It's not a great idea. We're going to put the brakes on it. We, as a city council, have that power. What we've given up now is we've given up the opportunity to do any of that. We're going to see nothing changing from the way it is, the norm it is today. And the norm that is today is something I think we've all agreed is something that we can't continue to, to, to have. So we've got ourselves a real pickle. We've, we've said that we needed to change. We've voted that we don't want to change. And as a consequence, we will change, but not necessarily in a way that we hope we have any control over. So I leave it with that. If we vote no on this, we won't need to worry about the other two amendments.
Thank you, Counselor.
By the way, yeah, this amendment also needs five votes. I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that.
Oh, thank you, Counsel. Counsel Gross?
Yeah, conversely, you know, where we can, a few years down the road, reverse this course, a few years down the road, we can also go on this course, actually two years down the road. When it was presented to us, so you know, that we I just wanted to point that out that also is the flip side of that coin, that's all.
I'd like to just suspend the rules of procedure and ask Greg to answer a question for us. Greg, there are a couple of counselors, new counselors on the committee that I'm not sure if they understand the two-year requirement. If a, if a zoning ordinance is not passed, can you, can you describe how that works for them, if you will?
Well, again, I guess the question is, who would initiate what? You know, based on, on the work that's been done by the planning board, whether these are the types of things that they would be focusing on in near future. If there's amendments proposed from the planning board, there is not a restriction of two years. They have the ability to initiate amendments within, with inside that two-year period. It's, it's really more for special permits and then also when there's a petition from a landowner, for instance, that is not successful. There's also an opportunity, if there are differences in the proposal from, from its, its prior, even for a landowner, for instance, if they, you know, proposed some, some certain change that was denied. It doesn't prohibit them from coming back with a, with a slightly different application.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other counselors like, like to be part of this discussion on this amendment? Counsel Gross?
Well, what Greg didn't tell us was that the council can bring it back in two years.
Oh, of course.
We can initiate it.
By any initiation, yes.
Right.
Great. Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion on this matter?
So I have a few things that I would like to say. I'm going to stick with my vote that I made at P and D. For a couple of reasons. One of the reasons is that most of Main Street can't become forty five maximum in mixed-use areas because most of the lots aren't sized to include sufficient needs for off-street parking. And if you look at some of the buildings that have entrances on both sides, there are no places for parking in, in that. So that wouldn't even be an option for those buildings, those structures. It makes it easier for owners to create multifamily, whether they be three or four dwellings along Main Street where they could be allowed, where larger buildings already exist and are part of the neighborhood character. So the average height on Main Street is forty five feet for the majority of the buildings. And you've got a building in between two buildings. You know, it, and you have the parking available as needed. Then that is definitely an option. And I think that that is helpful as we look for the need to develop housing stock and, and make sure that, that we have different options for people of different incomes that want to to live here in Gloucester. So I'm, I'm going to stick with my, my affirmative vote on this. Any, anyone else like to speak on this motion? Seeing none, let's call the roll. The motion was made by Counselor Grow and seconded by Counsel Worthley, and we need five affirmative votes. Is that correct, Counsel Grow?
That is correct.
Okay. Counselor Grow?
Yes.
Counselor Majota?
No.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
No.
Counselor O'Neal? No. Counselor Worthley?
No.
Counselor Gilman? Yes. Counselor Gross?
No.
The motion fails. Five opposed and four in favor.
All righty.
Next order of business, Counselor Grow, and I'm not sure if these other ones are going to need to be discussed, so.
I will explain it so that people understand why they're not necessary. And then these amendment eight and amendment nine both dealt with modifying the use tables and the definitions that were applied to them. Because we have not changed the height of either the residential or the City Center District, the thirty five or forty five feet. There's no need to amend the various use tables and, and dimensional tables. So there wouldn't be use tables, all the dimensional tables. So these are effectively moot. I don't think we have to vote them because they have no impact. I mean, if you vote affirmative yes on these, that would be kind of it'd be unnecessary. The heights are still governed by the ZBA. ZBA has the authority to give relief from thirty to thirty-five feet. And the city council has the authority to give relief over thirty-five feet up to, gosh, I don't know, five hundred feet. Just kidding, Tracy. Up to forty-five feet or necessary, but each of those things would require a change in the setback requirements and other things. Those are all existing ordinances on the books and don't need to be amended by us tonight. If I could, I'm just going to say one last thank you to Greg, to Rick Noonan and Sean Henry and the rest of the members of the planning board who put in a lot of years of work of this and, and, you know, not, not, not to, not to be down about it, but, you know, we, we sent them a clear message that we didn't like what they did. And I think that it's not unreasonable to expect that they're going to be a little ginger about making proposals in the future. And I think that's unfortunate because I think we need a planning board that is engaged and is, is, as resourceful in their efforts that these people have been. I know that people feel that they had to vote according to the, to the the will of their constituents. I think the downside of that is that we've effectively sent a message to them that, that they need to be very cautious about how much effort they put into future plans. And I think that's an unfortunate development because I do think that we're up for a world of hurt in the, in the next coming decade or so. And if we don't have a planning board and, and other commissions that are, that are eager to find ways and solutions that, that can be accepted, even if they meet resistance from the public, I think we're going to find ourselves in a, in a hard place, harder than we are today. But I, I do want to respect the fact that they work very hard on our behalf. And I would offer them the encouragement that they do have our support. I guess that's it. I, you know, again, city staff, Greg, and you and your team have been remarkable and we appreciate all the, the time you spent with us. And I hope that all the time off you get as a result is worth it. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I have to echo everything Counsel Gross said. It's been an amazing process. And I'm sure it's, it's extraordinarily frustrating for the planning board and the administration that worked really hard on this. On the other hand, you know, we did our first Zoom meetings ever on, for award meetings. We did a tremendous amount of listening. The clerk's office worked diligently to get all the packets together, all the facts on the website for everyone, so we could show clearly what the facts were in these different amendments. And I think we're all tired and, but I do think that maybe we learned something from the process and I thank you all for your hard work and particularly to Greg and the planning board. So unless there are further comments, I'd like a motion to Counsel Gross.
Yeah, I would just, you know, I would, I would also like to thank, you know, Greg Katamatory has put an awful lot of time into this without getting the outcome, but he's a consummate professional and I know will continue to work for the betterment of the city. The planning board, let's not just look at this as an isolated incident over the last few years. The planning board has accomplished an awful lot with the inclusionary housing, the ADUs. There's been an awful lot of really good things that have come up other than these, which by everybody's estimation was going to make very small changes. You know, whether you were an opponent or a proponent, both said the same thing on that. This was just incremental. We, as Jason has said, we have a major crisis that's, that's among us and I've made no secret of the fact that I felt that these did not, these did not address it. There is no such thing as small A affordable right now in this market. And, and so that, that was the reasons why I took the votes that I did. And I hope that we can you know, with the administration work towards to actually solving these problems with the, with the input of the community that all said that they were in favor of it. I'm going to be looking everybody right in the eye and saying, you, you were in favor of it when, when we come knocking. So NIMBY days are over. But let's move forward with some real, real change. And I hope everybody's in partnership with that.
Thank you, Counselor. And a shout out to Counsel Grow and Counsel O'Neal for your hard work in P and D.
Absolutely.
First year Counselor Tracy, you were like, just trying so hard to understand everything that was there and asking a lot of questions. So it's, it's been quite a journey, I'm sure. It's been a journey for me and this is my seventh year. So Counsel Worthley, and then I think we're ready to adjourn. Oh, and Counsel O'Hara after Counsel Worthley.
Thank you. And I tried to say some of these things in my comments earlier, and I, I feel the the sense of depression from some of us, and I like to look at it in a much brighter way. I know it's hard, specifically Counsel Grow.
Counsel Worthley, you are frozen. We're going to go to Counsel O'Hara and see if you unfreeze yourself. Counsel O'Hara?
Thank you. I want to thank the planning board, P and D, Counselor Grow, Counselor O'Neal, and Counselor Gilman for their efforts. We are, we are the elected body for the people. And our job is to listen to the people, at least my job as the city counselor, and I take it very seriously, is, is to listen to the people. You also have to make the hard decisions sometimes that doesn't necessarily reflect what the commentary of the, of the public or the constituents are. But we, we, we have some unique issues here in Gloucester. We are coming up upon our four hundred year anniversary, meaning we've been around for a long time. And we, we've said it too many times, our roads have been developed for horse and buggies. You know, the, the, the question about public safety is a real issue. September through, September through May, you know, we, we can transit the, the roads that we have in okay time, but we all know in another few weeks, hopefully, I think seven dollar a gallon diesel fuel and five dollar a gallon gasoline may change the, the picture of the visitors coming to Gloucester may increase, may decrease. We'll find out. We'll be able to answer that question in September, how the price of fuel has infected, has affected our, our visitor population. But we all know what the streets are like in the summertime. Saywood Street, East Main Street, Saturday, Sunday during the week, to be backed up to what was, as we just recently talked about, Bob's Clam Shack is not unusual. The back roads are even, you know, people are finding the back roads, you know, the shortcuts that people take. Those are even clogged up. We have yet to see the true outfall of two hundred units at, at the Fuller School, the build out of Gloucester Crossing, continual build out at, at Blackburn Industrial Park. How that's going to impact traffic. You see what's happening on the West Coast with the droughts, unprecedented. And I dare say, April showers bring May, May flowers. We didn't see too much rain in April. We are We are in a drought condition. Um, so we, we have to look at everything. Um, a- as the City Council, i- it's a tough call. Um, excuse me?
No, I'm, I'm just listening.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, so with that said, I, again, I, 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 I want to thank everyone, everyone who worked so hard. We all want to help the city, uh, and I, I appreciate everyone's time, everyone's efforts, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, but, um, all right, um, Counsel O'Neal, and then, um, we will move to adjourn. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. I would like to thank everyone as well. Um, the City Clerk's Office has been wonderful. Uh, they answer all my questions and they get all the information that we need. And, um, also the Planning Board guys and, um, women too. Um, they've been very patient with me and very, um, giving of information freely, and, um, I just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Counselor Nolan and then Counselor Grow?
Obviously, I want to, you know, reiterate everything. We're thanking the city staff and the Planning Board and the Planning Development Committee and Greg Katamatory. But I also want to thank the citizens of Gloucester. This has been going on for a long time. Uh, we've had a lot of meetings. We've had a high participation in, uh, online presence. The emails, the letters, and the phone calls, um, have shown where the public in the community and what their input is and how they feel about this matter. It's been a tough one for a lot of us, for a lot of different reasons. Um, but I, I think following the will of the public on this particular issue was important. And, uh, I'm kind of proud of the amount of time that we spent on this. And I think that as a council and as the administration and our staff members, um, we've worked out on this. And I want to thank everybody, including the citizens.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Counselor Majota and Counselor Grow?
I might as well speak. Um, I just want to thank everyone in the Planning Board, um, Counsel Grow too. Um, we might have not agreed tonight, but you've, um, been, uh, very professional, um, and, uh, also great in explaining everything um, and breaking down all the amendments to, um, so we can all fully understand. So I appreciate the time and thank you for that. And, um, just thank you. It was a great process and what a, um, big five months of, uh, first-time counselor in, um, zoning, so exciting. But I just want to thank everyone that participated in this whole process and thanks to City Clerk's Office for all these meetings and, um, being able to answer any questions that we have. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And finally, Counselor Grow, and then we're going to, go ahead.
I appreciate, I appreciate the very kind words, uh, from everybody about this, and, and I will be grateful not to be staring at this for the next couple of months. I, unfortunately, I do have to close the loop, though. It was given me a little heads up that we can't leave these amendments hanging, that we do actually have to vote them down. So, uh, Joanne, do you, you concur with that? That we, we, we should vote these eight and nine downs for closure, closure sake?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Because they were voted, they were, came out of committee report, so you even have to, you have to vote them down. You have, you have.
I was under the impression you didn't need to worry about them, but I was wrong. So if, if it's okay with the chair, I will just read them very quickly.
Please do.
And we'll, we'll, we'll exercise our, our voting here. Uh, this is Amendment Number Eight on a motion of Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Gilman. It says Grow, but I believe it was Gilman. Planning and Development Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the City Council amend the zoning ordinance, section three point two point two dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses other than signs. By amending footnote F to read, quote, "Increase the setback by one half foot for each foot by which the building exceeds the maximum allowed height." Unquote, "Subject to new information and or debate that results from the public hearing, this zoning amendment is deemed to be in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance, and I so move."
Second.
We have a motion by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Is there a discussion, counselors? Roll call, vote. Uh, Counselor Grow?
No.
Counselor Majota?
No.
Counselor Memhard?
No.
Counselor Nolan?
No.
Counselor O'Hara?
No.
Counselor O'Neal?
No.
Counselor Worthley?
No.
Counselor Gilman? No. Counselor Gross?
No.
Finally got my win.
Motion fails, uh, zero in favor, nine opposed in the last, um, amendment.
One on a motion by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor O'Neal, the Planning and Development Committee voted, roll call, two in favor, one opposed, to recommend the City Council to amend the zoning ordinance, section three point one point six, special permit for building heights in excess of section three point two limits by amending section three point one point six B by retitling the section and amending the first sentence to read, quote, "B, building heights in excess of thirty-five feet or greater, building heights in excess of height requirements of thirty-five or forty-five feet respectively, may be authorized by special permit issued by the City Council as reflected in the drafted proposal, subject to new information and or debate. The results from the public hearing, the zoning amendment is deemed to be in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance, and I so move."
Second.
Counselor Grow made the motion, was seconded by Counselor Worthley. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, if, if, if we win this one too, can we go back to the beginning and start again?
Um, seeing none, roll call, vote. Counselor Grow?
No.
Counselor Majota?
No.
Counselor Memhard?
I think we're a little bit like the US Supreme Court at this point. Nine and nine, huh?
Yeah.
No.
Counselor Nolan?
No.
Counselor O'Hara?
No.
Counselor O'Neal?
No.
Counselor Worthley? Counselor Gilman? No. Counselor Gross?
No.
Motion fails, zero in favor, nine opposed. Um, before we move to adjourn, I just wanted to just make two quick announcements. Tomorrow is a B and F meeting on smaller departments. It starts at nine in the morning, will end around four. Um, it's a Zoom meeting. Um, some members are meeting, um, in place, um, I believe at the Harbor Masters, but I believe for the majority of us will be Zooming in. And, um, have your books ready, and it's also posted as a committee of the whole. So what that means, counselors, is that B and F leads discussion. Um, and then after the discussion is pretty much done with in, in terms of a department budget, um, discussion, um, then we are allowed as additional counselors to, uh, discuss it, and that's why it's posted as a committee of the whole. And then we also have a City Council meeting next on the twenty-fourth, our normal meeting on Tuesday. Um, the start time is seven, and we are going to be back in person, just the counselors, for this particular meeting. And we're going to be at the Sawyer Free Library at the top floor, and we are going to be testing the, um, the Zoom and the screen and taking a look at how that might fare as a reasonable place where we could have both the public in the meeting with us if they wished, or hybrid technology via Zoom. So, um, so it's in-person, seven o'clock on the twenty-fourth. Um, let's, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I moved.
Um, so we have a move, um, Counsel Grow, and then seconded was Counselor Majota, I believe, um, to adjourn. Is it, was it Frank? Was it you?
I'll second it, sure.
Okay, well, I'll give, I'll give it to you. I wasn't looking. I just heard a bunch of voices. Um, so the roll call vote to adjourn is, uh, Counselor Grow?
Please.
Counselor Majota?
Yes, you might win another one, Jason.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes, and I'll look forward to seeing as many of you as possible tomorrow at budget meetings at nine o'clock.
Uh, Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Neal?
Yes.
Counselor Worthley?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman? Yes. Counselor Gross?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Joanne Sinos, thank you for your job. Well done. Good night, everybody. Thank you, Greg.